It's now live, you can begin.
Okay. Um. Because I'm waiting for Mayor Rogers, whenever he's ready, we can get started.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Okay. I'd like to call to order the electoral board hearing for December twenty second for Docket Belcher versus Towers, two thousand and twenty DMO EBO seven. Please be advised that on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency posed by the COVID nineteen pandemic and has further issued executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation and measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to section seven E of the Illinois Open Meeting Act and rules of procedure, and as chair of this board, I have determined that holding a meeting entirely in person that is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Opens Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference and without requiring the physical presence of a quorum. I further find that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than ten people at the regular meeting location in an accessible, hygienic, and legally compliant matter is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to hear all discussions, testimony, and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote and verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Opens Meetings Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed this meeting's public recording, thank you, of this meeting's public recording. Now, the introduction of the municipal officers of the electoral board, as stated and explained at the prior hearing in this matter, I am Riley Rogers, the chairperson of the electoral board, also serving on the electoral board is the village clerk, Mary Kay Dugan, and senior trustee Tiffany Henyard. These members are provided by provided for by the Illinois Election Code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates' nomination papers. Madam Clerk, will you take the role?
Chairman Rogers?
Here.
Clerk Dugan here, trustee Henyard.
Here.
There has been a quorum established, and are there appearances filed by the attorneys, and what attorneys are here?
Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
Dennis Giannopoulos on behalf of the candidate.
Okay, very good. Okay, and then our electoral board hearing attorney?
Amber Samuelson on behalf of the electoral board.
Okay, great. If there's any public comment, it has to be made at this time.
Um, I do not see any public comment that's been posted.
Okay. All right, adoption of the rules of procedure. Attorney Samuelson.
We don't need to do that. At this point, we can proceed on to the proceedings on the motion for subpoena.
Okay.
Um. I guess the parties seem to have reached an agreement and have sent the subpoenas that they've agreed to. I've since forwarded those on to the board members. If one of the attorneys would like to make a presentation at this time regarding those subpoenas, um, you can.
Yes, I'd be happy to do so, and of course, Mr. Giannopoulos, feel free to jump in if there's anything that I misstated or misrepresented. Mr. Giannopoulos and I did have a chance to confer regarding the scope of the subpoenas, and we have agreed to limit the scope of all subpoenas to two thousand and twenty forward, so January first, two thousand and twenty forward. And in addition to that, we limited the scope of the subpoena for the tax returns to simply allow for the disclosure of the address from which the candidate and Mr. Towers was filing, I think it's just a candidate, was filing her tax returns, and also to disclose any property that she may have disclosed on her tax returns. So all the other financial information and personal identifying information would thus be redacted from those tax returns. We have also added, and Mr. Giannopoulos didn't express any objection to this, a subpoena for Mr. Houston Towers. You know, we understand that the the candidate and the candidate's attorney do not have any control over Mr. Houston Towers, so that will obviously be an independent subpoena that would be sent out. And uh, the, you know, we cleaned up some of the language, some of the broad language where it would say any and all documents and sort of limited to the scope to the relevant documents. So I think that the subpoenas are agreeable to both parties now, and we would ask that these subpoenas be approved and so that we could begin issuing them and get them out and get them served.
That fairly and accurately represents the discussions that we engaged in yesterday, confining the scope of the subpoenas. As a technical point, I want to clear that I'm not waiving the the argument that was made regarding seeking none seeking discovery of documents, but having said that and subject to that objection, we've reached an agreement that's been characterized correctly by by Ms. Nelson Jaworski.
Oh, okay, that being said, are we going to limit the time that the subpoenas should be active and are served?
Oh, well, we would like to obviously get them served as soon as possible. I'm going to be asking for a one or two day turnaround in the subpoenas, but practically speaking, you know, the responding parties, you know, may or may not respond. I've done this a few times, and sometimes the responding parties get the responses out pretty quickly. Sometimes I receive them two or three months after the case is closed. Oh.
That was my my thought, you know, are we going to limit the process here because like you said, it could take two to three months, you may not get a response, and, you know, we need to get this done fairly quick, quickly, so we can get on with the process.
I don't think that there would be any delay in the, you know, in the hearings. You know, we would obviously ask for a little bit of time to get the subpoenas back, but I understand that these are electoral board proceedings, they proceed very quickly. Yes, I fully appreciate that, so you know, whatever time the board is willing to give, I'd ask, you know, if we send them out today or even tomorrow morning, given the holiday weekend, I would ask that, you know, maybe we can continue this hearing until mid to late next week to allow for some time for response, preferably late last week, next week, to allow some time for response to the subpoenas. And then, you know, some may respond, some may not. We make records from some very quickly, and we may get records, we may not get records from some quickly. So, hey Dennis, you're unmuted.
Just a reminder as well, we still have, this case is set for further proceedings. The parties have set a briefing schedule for a motion to strike and dismiss, so we will be coming back on the twenty
nine.
Nine. At two o'clock for the hearing on the motion to strike and dismiss, depending on what happens with that motion, the case would then possibly be set for the evidentiary hearing on the objector's petition, so to give you an idea of the timeline. And if the, if, as the objector sends out the subpoenas, if the subpoenas are not responded to in a timely manner, then it is up to the objector. Oh, it's up to the electoral board, we can seek enforcement of the subpoenas. But we do have, the next step would be the hearing on the, any motions filed by the candidate.
Yes, yeah, and the candidate, I believe, has until the end of the day tomorrow to file their motion to strike and dismiss, and then I've got my response due on Monday at ten AM. So, yeah, maybe if we could sort of have a status on the subpoenas on Tuesday when we deal with the motion to dismiss, obviously, depending on the results of the motion to strike and dismiss.
Right, and that's what I wanted to just bring up, the fact that we're running into the same thing next week with the holiday.
Sure.
You know, and you talked about later, later next week. I'm not sure if you're talking about New Year's Eve or the day before New Year's Eve, but certainly I wanted to make sure that we put some type of timeframe on the service of the subpoenas and turnaround time.
Well, I would, and, you know, as stated, I'm going to put a, pretty much a one day, one or two day turnaround due date on the subpoenas, but again, you know, whether they actually get complied with is
Sure.
a whole nother story, so.
Okay, should we?
Get them in the next day, and sometimes it'll take, again, three months after the case has already been done and the election's already been held, so.
Right, okay, all right, great. Should we continue? Ms. Samuelson?
If there's no further discussion on the on the agreed subpoenas, then then the next up would be to ask for electoral vote of the board as to as to the subpoenas agreed by the parties.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I guess, well, I'm getting confused, that is, what's the date for her subpoenas? Attorney Tiffany, what's your date you're asking for? Are you asking for a particular date?
Yes. In the subpoena request, I'm going to be asking for them to give us the documents by probably by tomorrow or maybe ten AM on Thursday. Again, the likelihood of most of the agencies actually being able to comply with that unfortunately is you know, up in the air. I mean, some, I think that, you know, some of them, like the county clerk and stuff like that, will probably comply fairly quickly. It's some of the other agencies that we just don't know how long it's going to take. So I'm going to be asking for a quick date so that they put this at the top of their calendar and begin processing it as quickly as possible. But there's obviously no guarantees about what we would get in what timeframe, so that's why I was suggesting that on Tuesday we discuss after the hearing on the motion to strike and dismiss, assuming that the motion to strike and dismiss is denied, then after the hearing, I think we should discuss the status of the subpoenas.
Okay.
Possibly during the hearing, it may be relevant to the hearing.
Okay, so Amber, I guess now my next question is, what do we do as a board as it relates to time? Because I don't see her getting them back that quick. So do we say the deadline could be like, man, she was saying later in the week? So can I suggest that it be the thirty first for deadline for subpoenas, or how does that work?
So what will happen is, is that if you guys decide to agree to the issuance of the agreed subpoenas, then Ms. Jaworski will finalize those subpoenas, they'll send them back to us for signature by the chair, and they'll be sent out for service. We come back, we're already scheduled to come back on the twenty ninth for hearing on any motions filed by the candidate. Depending on what happens with those motions, this case might be set for evidentiary hearing. Um, and so we'll pick another date for evidentiary hearing. At that point, it's assumed that Ms. Jaworski will have all the information that she needs to proceed on her case. So I guess the question will be, when we come back on the twenty ninth, we'll get an update on whether or not anybody has responded to the subpoenas, and then there'll be a discussion as to setting this for a date for hearing. Um, whether that is done before or after the new year will be something for the board to discuss. And I'm sure that the parties at that time will have a better idea as to whether or not they'll be ready to proceed. Does that sound accurate? If any of the parties want to chime in, feel free to. Does that answer your question, trustee Henyard?
Yes, thank you.
And I will also be sending, provided that I I have time to get this done, you know, during the hearings and stuff, I will also be sending the revised subpoenas with the dates. And again, I'll put tomorrow, close of business as a due date, hopefully they're able to comply. I will send those over to attorney Samuelson. I'll copy Mr. Giannopoulos so that they could get signed by the chair as soon as possible.
And then one final point, well, perhaps it's final or not, but for my end it is. We had a prior agreement that any documents that are produced in response to the subpoenas will be tendered to the candidate's counsel, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
All right, thank you.
Okay, great, and I'd like to remind you that a lot of the agencies, their personnel are working remotely, so hopefully there won't be a delay in the response from those agencies. Okay, why don't we just take a motion to vote on this?
I move to approve the issuance of subpoenas as agreed to by the parties.
Second.
There be no further discussion. Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan?
Aye.
Trustee Henyard?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Attorney Samuelson?
Um, is, are there any other matters for the electoral board regarding the Belcher versus Towers? If not, I would ask for a motion to recess the board until December twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty at two PM.
I'd like to make a motion to recess the board until December twenty ninth.
Okay.
Use a motion and second to continue, have this process recessed to December twenty ninth. Any discussion on this? Roll call.
Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan?
Aye.
Trustee Henyard?
Aye.
Motion carries, three ayes. Okay. Next matter up.
The next matter is at twelve thirty, and that would start with the board for the mayoral candidates, so there would be trustee House, trustee Henyard, and our public member Carolyn.
For mayoral candidates.
For mayoral candidates.
We actually had a twelve o'clock.
Who's that speaking?
I thought we it's Carolyn Craftifer. I believe we had a hearing scheduled for twelve o'clock on one of my cases.
Uh, twelve thirty, it would be the Holmes case. And I did receive an email from the attorney for the candidate that he might be running late, he might not be able to log in until twelve forty-five. Um, so I know we do have the attorney for the objector on the Zoom, and it looks like we have all members of the board, so we're just waiting for the attorneys to log in.
And just by way of correction, the members of the board are
Oh, sorry.
trustee House, myself, and the public member.
Oh, I apologize, the trying to keep um, yes, it would be trustee House, clerk Mary Kay Dugan, and the public member. Um. So once we have the other attorney on, we can get started. My apologies, clerk.
Misful thinking on somebody's part.
Just a suggestion, I don't know if the council or the board would be so inclined, but I believe we have all parties present on the second objection. If, if the board were of desire to, perhaps we could, at twelve thirty, go into that case first while we're waiting for the other attorney to show up at twelve forty-five. Just a suggestion.
I do not, I do not believe we can do that because the notice the Open Meetings Act notice would have informed the public that it starts at one, right?
Yes.
Case number two.
Okay. I thought it was set at twelve thirty as well, just it was going to be sequentially the second case.
It is at one o'clock.
For some reason, I had one up for twelve, twelve thirty, and one, so I don't know what happened.
And I just blocked out the whole afternoon.
Yes, candidate Holmes is at twelve thirty. Candidate Rogers is at one o'clock. And so.
And then candidate Shaw is at one thirty. Candidate Parker is at two, and then the three trustee cases are all scheduled for two thirty.
Yay. So we come back at twelve thirty?
Um, yeah, come back at twelve thirty. That's okay with everybody.
Hello. Okay.
Does it look like we now have all the parties to the twelve thirty proceeding? Case number oh one?
Yes, we do. I think some people have to come back to the hearing. Can, Mr. Holmes, attorney, can you hear everybody okay?
Is that Mr. Abasi?
Yes, Mr. Abasi. Oh, he's connecting to the audio, okay. Mr. Abasi, can you hear everybody?
Yeah, 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 now I hear everybody, yes.
Okay. Um. All right, I think everybody is present, so if trustee House wants to call the Holmes case, he can.
Okay, so now we will call to order the electoral board hearings for December twenty second on the case of Docket Belcher versus Holmes, two thousand and twenty DMO EB case number one. If I can ask, attorney Samuelson, would you read the statement defining of in-person meetings unfeasible due to the pandemic?
Yes. Please be advised that on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency posed by the COVID nineteen pandemic and has further issued executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to section seven E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, the rules of procedure and the chair of the board has determined that holding a meeting entirely in person that otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of this ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference without requiring the physical presence of a forum. Chairperson further finds that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than ten people at the regular meeting location is an accessible, hygienic, and legally compliant matter is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call notes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Opens Meetings Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meeting's public reporting.
Thank you very much. Next up is the introduction of municipal officers electoral board. So as stated and explained in the prior meeting, I am Jason House, the substitute chairperson of the electoral board, serving in the place of mayor, of the mayor who is seeking election to the office at issue in this matter. Also serving on the electoral board is village clerk Mary Kay Dugan and public member Carolyn Craftifer, who was appointed by the circuit court of Cook County in place of senior trustee Tiffany Henyard, who is also seeking election to the office at issue in this matter. These members are provided for by the Illinois Electoral Board, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates' nomination papers. Madam Clerk, if you can, will you do a roll call to establish a quorum?
Sure, chairman House?
Present.
Clerk Dugan, present, member Craftifer.
Present.
Okay, a quorum has been established. And then we want to just make sure that there has been an appearance filed by all parties. Attorney Sammerson, have those been filed?
Those have, and can the attorneys for the parties introduce themselves and confirm they have no issues regarding the Zoom technology?
Yes, Tiffany Nelson Jaworski confirming my appearance and confirming that I am not having any issues with Zoom.
And a poor consistency for candidate Holmes, confirming my appearance.
Well? Sounds like I think I had a technical issue on my end. My apologies.
Well, let's short circuit this a little bit. I have had.
Hold on a second, could everybody else hear him because he was breaking up on my computer?
No.
Okay.
Um, I may be. Oh, he's gone.
Oh, okay.
While we're waiting for Mr. Abasi to sign on again, can we just put into the record the documents that we received in this case since we met last? So this is what I have, and people can let me know if I'm missing anything. I have appearances for both attorneys. I have a copy of the case management order that we issued. I have Ms. Nelson Jaworski's motion for 12 different subpoenas. I don't have anything filed by the candidate other than the appearance. Is that correct, Ms. Samuelson?
No, that is not correct. The candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December 18, 2020. I can resend that now.
Hold on, let me see, did you send that with other with other documentation?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head. Off the top of my head, I don't know. I can search through my emails, but it might be easier for me to just resend it. So let me do that now.
Oh, you know what, I have it. You know, I'm sorry, I was going by the titles of the emails and I think that, all right, so. Perfect, I have it, which is exactly what I wanted to go through, just to make sure I had everything. And then was there a response filed on that by the objector?
No, actually, I was going to speak to that. After having a chance to confer with my client and go through what evidence we may or may not have, we've determined that we are going to withdraw the objection.
Um, okay, do we have? Let's see, all right, so we have the objector, but do we? We don't have the candidate or the candidate's attorney on the line right now, right?
Correct, we're not on.
Hang on, I've got somebody joining.
Okay.
Hey, yeah, it's Paracely Zabassi. I guess I had a problem with my internet signal, so I'm calling in now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Abasi. While you were having technical difficulties, Ms. Nelson Jaworski indicated to us that she would be withdrawing the objection. I presume you don't have any objection to that?
And then, no, no objection to that.
Well, I would say, I guess, hearing no objection, then the case will be withdrawn. Attorney Sammerson kind of directed us, do we just motion to accept the withdrawal or?
Uh, yes, you would do a motion to accept the objector's withdrawal of their objection.
Okay, so I will move that we accept the objector's withdrawal of the challenge.
Second. Go ahead. Yours.
Hearing it motioned and seconded, no, uh, no discussion. Clerk Dugan, can you call a roll, please?
Chairman House?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Member Craftifer?
Aye.
All right, so three ayes, object, that has passed. And I guess there's no further, will we make a motion to dismiss?
Um, no, just for the record, the elect, I will be preparing a written decision for the electoral board to finalize its decision to accept the withdrawal and to serve upon the parties electronically. If any party is not present, the final decision will be emailed to them with a copy sent via certified mail. So we do need to continue this to another date to sign the decision.
Okay. So for the electoral board, is there another date that the board is available or any suggestions? I know there are other cases that maybe we can.
Well, I can, can, let's see here. Can we make a motion to recess this until a date that we specified, like when we're, well, Ms. Jaworski, you're in the other two cases that we have, but we have different counsel. I see Mr. Genopoulos is, Mr. Genopoulos is also on on this particular call. Um, we, we have not set the mayoral cases for any different time period yet, right? So I think we should continue all three of them to the same day if possible. So on this one, can, can we just, can we make a motion to recess and then provide the time when we're, when we determine the attorney's availabilities in the other case? Or Ms. Samuelson, do you have an idea on how to handle that?
Okay, I see Attorney Jaworski, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, you know, we're not in the, we're not in the Riley Rogers case yet, but I guess I wanted to give the board a heads up. We will be also withdrawing that one for the same reason. So the only mayoral objection or the only objection to a candidate for a mayoral office that will still be in play, if you will, is the Shaw matter. So these, I have no, I agree that we should still all set them on the same date for the sake of judicial economy and not making, making everybody come back for that. But I expect that, you know, councils may or may not want to waive their appearance for that day. So it may just be up to the availability of the board as well as the availability of opposing counsel in the Shaw case.
Okay, and we don't have Mr. Spence on the, on the call yet, so. If it's okay, because the issuance of that decision, while we're required to do it publicly, it's perfunctory and we have to do it in an open meeting. If it's okay with counsel, if we can just notify you whatever date that we do pick, but Mr. Genopoulos, it would be impacting you and it would also be impacting Mr. Abasi. Of course, your appearance is not necessarily required. But can we let you know in an hour what day we're continuing that to when we're on the third hearing?
Would have no objection to that whatsoever.
Okay, we're still.
Yes.
Yeah, and for Holmes, I have no objection.
Okay, great, and Mr. Genopoulos, we still are going to have to convene your case on the record.
I understand.
So.
1 o'clock, 1 o'clock, I believe.
Okay, then I would make a motion to recess case number 01 until um, a date that we will notify the attorneys of, you know, later today. So I would just make a motion to recess the electoral board at this point on case number 01 and I would direct the attorney to prepare a written decision accepting.
I'll second. So being motioned and seconded, Clerk Dugan, can you call a roll, please?
Chairman House?
Aye.
Member Craftifer?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'll get it right before we're done.
Call me Carolyn, that's fine.
No, I'm, well, for your sake, I probably should, but I'm going to keep trying with your permission. And Clerk Dugan, aye.
Okay, so we have been continuing, I guess we can recess until the 1 PM call for the next case?
Yes. So if everyone can come back at 1 o'clock uh, for the next case, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello.
Hello.
Do we have everyone in case O two?
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Okay, here we do so then we'll go right back into calling the order. The electoral board for December 22nd, 2020 on case Belcher versus Rogers, 2020 DMO EB zero two. And attorney Samson, can you assist me again with the statement of findings and in person meetings unfeasible due to the COVID-19 pandemic?
Oh, can do. Please be advised that on December 11th, 2020, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency posed by the COVID-19 pandemic and has further issued executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to section seven E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and the rules of procedure and as chair and the chair of this board has determined that holding a meeting entirely in person that is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference and without requiring the physical presence of a quorum. The chair further finds that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than 10 people at the regular meeting location is an accessible, hygienic and legally compliant manner that is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporary contemporaneously hear all discussion, testimony and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meetings, public reporting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As an introduction of the municipal officers and electoral board, as stated and explained in prior hearings of this matter, I am Jason House, the substitute chairperson of the electoral board serving in the place of the mayor who was seeking election to this office and matter. Also serving on the electoral board is village clerk Mary Kay Dugan and public member Carrie Lynn Craftifer, who was appointed by the circuit court of Cook County placed it in place of senior trustee Tiffany Henyard, who is seeking election at office in this matter as well. These members are provided for by the Illinois election code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates nomination papers. So next up is our roll call or clerk Dugan. Can you call the role please for attendance?
Yes, Chairman House.
President.
Clerk Dugan present, member Craftifer present.
Okay, a quorum has been established and the want to make sure we have appearance by all parties. Attorney Samuelson, please help.
Attorney Samuelson for the electoral board. Do we have, can the attorneys for the parties please identify themselves?
Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
And Dennis Jeanopoulos on behalf of the candidate.
Thank you very much. Any public comment on this case?
Um, I am, I'm, I was asked to give a couple of seconds to allow for public comment. I am looking at the what has been posted and I do not see any public comment related to this case.
Okay, seeing no public comment, would it be necessary that we do a recap of the case filings?
Yes, it will be.
So a recap of the case filings first was the initial hearing held on December 15th, 2020 and case management order was issued subsequent there too. Next was the objector filed a motion for subpoena on December 16th, 2020. Third was the candidate filed an objection to the motion for subpoena on December 17th, 2020. And fourth, the candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December 18th, 2020. So for the proceedings and on the objections for Belcher versus Riley, we're on the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verify petition. Any preliminary motions to be heard?
Well, if it may please the board, I just wanted to let the board know that I have had an opportunity to speak with my client. I've also spoke with opposing counsel and as such, we will be withdrawing this objection.
Okay, any further discussion needed?
Hmm, no, you can make a motion.
There are no further discussion. I'll make a motion to accept the objectors withdrawal motion on this case.
Second.
Being motioned and seconded, clerk Dugan, can you call the role please?
Chairman House.
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Member Craftifer, aye.
Okay. Our case will be withdrawn and I think we were going to make the motion to continue with the date pending our, our final court case. So I would make that motion at this time.
Second.
It'll be a motion that I'll ask if clerk Dugan can call the role one more time.
One more time. Chairman House.
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Member Craftifer, aye.
Okay, and that we have three ayes that passes and we will, I guess we will recess again until 1:30 when the next case will be called.
Can I just ask Mr. Jeanopoulos, like if you will set a date, but do you have any dates like over the next week when you're not available to like zoom in for the hearing?
With the exception of the 25th, I would probably make myself available virtually any day at the board's convenience.
You don't want to spend Christmas with us?
No, I'd rather spend it with other loved ones, not that the board isn't loved.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. We will reconvene at 1:30 PM.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Hello, Mayor.
Hey, hey.
Merry Christmas and happy new years.
How you doing?
I'm good.
Yeah.
Enjoying my vacation.
Mayor Rogers, you're unmuted.
I thought that was you over there.
Mayor Rogers, Mayor Rogers, you're unmuted.
All right.
Mayor Rogers, Mayor Rogers, you're unmuted.
Okay, it would appear that we have all parties needed for this to move forward. And so if I can, we want to do a call of this case at 1:30 PM. It is the Dalton Municipal Electoral Board, case number, you know, Belcher versus Shaw, case two zero two zero, DM O E B zero three. Uh, call this to order and uh, one final time, if you can, for me, Attorney Samuelson, read the statement of findings of in-person meetings are feasible due to the COVID nineteen pandemic.
Okay, please be advised that on December eleventh, twenty twenty, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic, and has further issued executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to section seven E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and the Rules of Procedure, the Chair of the Board has determined that holding a meeting entirely in person that is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent this meeting, to the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference without requiring the physical presence of a forum. The Chair further finds that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than ten people at the regular meeting location in an accessible, hygienic, and legally compliant manner is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to contemporaneously hear all discussions, testimony, and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meeting's public recording. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As an introduction of the Municipal Officers Electoral Board, as stated and explained in the prior hearings in this matter, I am Jason House, the substitute chairperson of the Electoral Board in place of the mayor who was seeking election to the office at issuing this matter. Also serving on the Electoral Board is Village Clerk Mary Kay Dugan and Public Member Carrie Lynn Craftifer, who was appointed by the Circuit Circuit Court of Cook County in place of Senior Trustee Tiffany Henyard, who is also seeking election to the office at issuing this matter. These members are provided for by the Illinois Election Code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates' nomination papers. Uh, Clerk Dugan, can you do a roll call to establish your quorum, please?
Yes, Chairman House.
Present.
Clerk Dugan, present. Member Craftifer. Present.
Present.
Gosh, thank you.
The quorum has been established. Uh, has an appearance been filed by all parties and attorneys?
Yes, Tiffany Nelson Jaworski appearing on behalf of the objector.
Heath Spence appearing on behalf of the candidate, Robert Shaw.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, are there, is there any public comment at this time on this case?
I do not see any public comment. Uh, can I get confirmation from Giovanni that there is no public comment regarding this case? She's gone.
Oh, there we go. None. There's no public comment.
Okay, there being no public comment, we're gonna do a recap recap of the case status filings. Uh, first filing was the initial hearing, uh, held on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, and case management ordered issue subsequent thereto. Second was the objector, the objector filing a motion for subpoena on December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. Third was the candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. And fourth, the objector filed a response to the motion to strike and dismiss on December twenty first, two thousand and twenty. Uh, so moving into the, our proceedings, what think we first go with the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss? The objectors filing, uh, verified petition. So any preliminary motions or arguments by the, by the parties, uh, the candidate will argue first.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, as indicated in our, uh, our motion to strike and dismiss, uh, the respondent, Robert Shaw, is a candidate for the office of mayor, the village of Dalton, uh, to be voted on at the February twenty third, twenty twenty one consolidated primary election. Mr. Shaw submitted forty-three pages of nominating petitions with significantly more than twenty twenty-five necessary valid signatures. The objections to the nominated petitions allege that uh, the respondent does not reside at the address stated on his statement of candidacy, and therefore he is not legally qualified to hold the office he seeks. Uh, the petitioner has all, objector has also filed an objection to the nominating petitions based on the allegation that the petitions are invalid uh, because the notary is not dated on the circulator's affidavit. Uh, it is our position that the petition, the objector's petition fails on both issues raised. First, according to the Illinois Municipal Code, both elected and appointed officials in general are required to reside in an, in the municipality. Uh, section three point one dash ten five specifically provides that a person is eligible for elected office if he or she is a qualified elector of the municipality and has resided in the municipality at least one year next preceding the election. Uh, candidate Robert Shaw, uh, had a physical presence in and moved into the village of Dalton, uh, specifically at one forty-four thirty-four Sanderson, and registered as a voter in the municipality on December fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. We've attached his voter registration, uh, card verification, um, uh, to our, our motion as exhibit A. The respondent's current address, where he has a physical presence and is physically located and resides, as indicated on his statement of candidacy, is fifteen twenty-seven Berg Drive in Dalton, Illinois. I've also attached, uh, as an exhibit, a copy of, uh, Mr. Shaw's driver's license indicating this, this address that is, uh, attached as exhibit B. Again, the, the consolidated primary election is not until February twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. At the time of the election, uh, Mr. Shaw will have resided in the municipality a full fourteen months preceding the election. The second issue raised is that the notarial signature is not dated, but the objector admits by their absence of an objection that the circulator appeared before the notary, as no allegation of fraud has been alleged in the objector's petition. The certification of the petition sheet merely requires that the document was signed and sworn to before an officer authorized to administer oaths in Illinois. It is undisputed that the candidate signed the circulator, uh, statement in the presence of the notary and a stamp and a signature of the notary public was placed upon the document, indicating that she had the authority to notarize the document. The objector simply states that the notary's, notary's signature was not dated. There are mandatory and directory requirements under section seven ten of the Election Code. To the extent that seven ten of the Election Code is a mandatory rather than in a, a directory statute, the Illinois Supreme Court has acknowledged that substantial compliance can satisfy mandatory statutory requirements governing statements of candidacy. That is the case of Goodman v. Ward, two forty-one ill, second, three ninety-eight. The court has also applied the doctrine of substantial compliance to the mandatory provisions of the Election Code. That is the case of Cunningham v. Shaflin, twenty twelve ill app, under the direction of, uh, one twenty-five two nine. Our courts have repeatedly recognized that substantial, rather than strict compliance, is the proper standard by which to evaluate deviations from certain mandatory provisions of the Election Code. The Illinois appellate court has generally excused clerical errors in notarial jurats to where the affiant is otherwise correctly identified. The provisions of the Election Code are designed to protect the integrity of the electoral process, and that access to a place on the ballot is a substantial right, not likely to be denied. The essential act required under the code is that personal appearance of the circulator before notary. The fact that the date on the notarization is missing does not impugn the integrity of the oath-taking process. Circulators appeared before the notary and stated under oath that they were in the individual that circulated the petitions and questions. Section five, uh, section seven ten and the analogous section ten dash four do not say the nomination papers should be notarized, but rather say that the circulator must appear, must swear an oath in front of a person authorized to administer oaths. This in case the circulator did in fact take an oath before a person who they believe was authorized to administer oaths, supplying all the information required of them by statute. Thus, it is clear that the circulators believe that they could be subjected to perjury prosecutions if the statements they made prove to be false. I have attached also an affidavit from the notary indicating that she indeed did, indeed, indeed did notarize the circulator's petitions on November thirteenth, believe, of two thousand and twenty. The objector again has alleged no, uh, has alleged evidence of, no evidence of fraud or corruption on the part of either the circulator or the notary. And because of the foregoing, a respondent, Robert Shaw, prays that the Dalton Municipal Officers Electoral Board dismiss the objector's petition and make a summary decision on all the objections that have been raised.
Thank you for that summary. Does that conclude your summary, Attorney Spence?
Yes, it does.
Okay, and or argument, Attorney Jaworski?
Yes, thank you very much. Um, I will try to be as brief as possible in my oral argument. I'll sort of attack the points point by point, if you will. So, in relation to the quote-unquote voter registration card that was presented as an exhibit, uh, showing that Mr. Shaw was allegedly registered to vote at one four four three four Sanderson, and that document was signed on twelve fourteen, two thousand and nine, allegedly. There is nothing on this document that actually says it's a voter registration card. In fact, if you look at the top half of the document, it's completely cut off. I, I don't know what this is. This could be any sort of application. This could be an application that was done but never submitted. There is nothing on this document that shows that it is an official document of the Cook County Clerk, and as such, this document should not even be regarded. So that's the first thing I wanted to attack is the efficacy of this document and whether this document should have any sort of weight. And I believe that it should be given zero weight because, again, it's not a certified document. Doesn't even seem to be something that's pursuant to a FOIA. There's no stamp of the county clerk showing that it's been received or processed. And in fact, you know, a quick look at the county clerk's website doesn't show any sort of registration for a Robert Shaw at this address. So that's problematic. Second of all, as it relates to the candidate's driver's license, I would like the point to, point to the board that the date of issuance of the driver's license was ten twenty-one twenty. So it was a little over a month and a half, about two months ago, actually, from yesterday's date. So the candidate, in fact, has not produced anything so far to show that he is actually a registered voter, and that is he, that he has had regis, I'm sorry, that he is a registered voter at the address of Berg or Sanderson, and that he has maintained residency for at least one year in the village of Dalton. We have produced, however, voter registration records from the city of Chicago, from the city of Chicago's website, that in fact do show that the candidate is considered an active voter in the city of Chicago. These records were pulled as recently as twelve twenty, twenty twenty, so two days ago. And these records show, if you look on the first page, it shows Robert Shaw, forty-four fifty-nine West Washington Boulevard, Chicago, Illinois, six oh six two four, and that he is a active voter in good standing with the city of Chicago. Mr. Shaw has also previously run from this address, uh, for the M W R D office. In addition to all of this, as it relates to the driver's license that was issued, I'd also like to point the board to, uh, the Illinois Secretary of State, um, has something on their, their website that allows for you to, you know, review the status of a license. And the status of the license that was issued to Mr. Shaw states that it was, it was mailed on ten twenty-eight twenty. The status says U P, USPS returned because attempted not known. Please verify that the address on your temporary ID is recognized by the United States Postal Service as a deliverable address. After verification with the United States Postal Service, please visit a Secretary of State Driver Services facility with proof of new residence address to be reprocessed. Please review this form, and then it gives a link to a form for a listing of acceptable documents to prove residence address. So the address that the candidate gave for his own nomination papers, as well as that was on his petitions, I'm sorry, that does, as well as it was on his driver's license, that address came back as undeliverable. They had attempted, the Secretary of State clearly had attempted to deliver the candidate's driver's license to the address on his petitions, and that again came back as undeliverable. It's our opinion, and we think that the evidence, um, if given the opportunity, would show that the candidate does not in fact live at the Berg address, the one five two seven Berg Drive in the village of Dalton, and that the candidate also was not registered, is not registered at the address at one four four three four Sanderson. Uh, moving on as it relates to the notary issue. So candidate's counsel has argued that, that substantial compliance should prevail. As the objectors counsel, we recognize that the doctrine of substantial compliance is generally applicable in, in a lot of instances, and that the courts generally favor ballot access. But favoring ballot access does not mean throwing out the baby with the bathwater, and does not mean completely ignoring the mandatory provisions of the Illinois Election Code, as well as the provisions that are imputed by the Illinois Election Code and bringing in other statutes such as the Illinois Public Notary Act. So the Illinois Election Code in section seven ten states that at the end, that such, as it relates to the circulator's affidavit, states that such statements shall be sworn to before some officer authorized to administer oaths in this state. Section two of the Oaths and Affirmations Act provides that all courts, judges, and clerks thereof, the county clerk, the deputy clerk, the Secretary of State, notaries public, and persons certified under the Illinois Certified Shorthanded Reporters Act of nineteen eighty-four shall administer all oaths of office and all other oaths authorized or required of any officer or, or other person, and take affidavits and depositions concerning any matter or thing, process, or proceeding commenced to be commenced or pending in any court before them, or on any occasion wherein an affidavit or deposition is authorized or required by law to be taken. The section seven ten in the Illinois Election Code clearly states that there needs to be an oath or affirmation done. It, it needs to be done before somebody who's authorized to administer oaths. The section two of the Oaths and Affirmations Act provides who is allowed to administer oaths. So now we move forward to the Illinois Notary Act, Illinois Public Notary Act. Section six dash one oh three of the Illinois Public Notary Act sets forth the requirements of a notarial act to make said act valid. Section six dash one oh three A specifically states that the Illinois Public Notary Act provides that a notarial act must be evidenced by a certi- certificate signed and dated by the public notary. The certificate must, I'm sorry, my page just went haywire. Their certificate must include identification of the jurisdiction in which the notarial act, in which the notarial act is performed, and the official seal of the office. The case cited by the candidates, uh, Syntac or Syntoc versus Kozubowski, uh, was an Illinois appellate court case out of the first district, and that case addressed properly completed notary jurat, where the notary had in the portion of the petition where it said circulator, the name of circulator, the notary had put their name in that portion as well as signed in the portion that says signature of notary. So an objection was filed, was filed in that case saying that they did not comply with the notary act, and that the notary was invalid, and that they should, and that, that, that circulator's affidavit should then be disqualified, and therefore disqualifying the entire set of petitions. The court analyzed what sort of things could be missing or could be, you know, a deviation from the Illinois Public Notary Act. And I want to read, um, a quote from the court, actually, two quotes from the court, which I think are very illuminating as to how the court was viewing this, and how the court viewed which items may actually be, be missing and which ones may not be, which things are mandatory and which things are discretionary. So the court stated, "The statute," and they're speaking of the Illinois Notary Act, "accords with custom. Courts generally view a jurat as merely the, that part of an affidavit where the officer certified that it was sworn before him. It is not the affidavit, rather, the jurat is simply evidence of the fact that the affidavit was properly sworn by the affiant." And there's a bunch of citations. Accordingly, where an affiant is otherwise identified, courts overlook mere clerical errors such as naming the wrong person in the jurat, or even omitting the jurat from the affidavit's name entirely. And the court goes on to state that the court re, the court went on to find that the circulator's affidavit complied with the election code in that case, but the court reasoned, and this is very important, the court reasoned that the jurat met the statutory requirements of section six dash one oh three A of the Notary Public Act. The jurat contained the information required by subsection A and sufficiently showed that the, a circulator swore an oath before a notary, meeting the requirements of subsection B two and B three. I think that statement from the appellate court is extremely illuminating as it relates to compliance with subsection A of six dash one oh three. I submit that the court, by making this statement, if there had not been compliance with subsection six dash one oh three A of the Notary Act, in that case, the court's decision may have gone the exact opposite way. So what is the purpose of putting the date on there? The purpose of putting the date on there is to show when the notarial act occurred. If we can't determine when the notarial act occurred, and we have to go to evidence that's outside of the four corners of the petitions, meaning looking at an affidavit, that's not complying with the election code. We are confined to the four corners of the petitions. We should be able to look at those petitions, see from them, okay, they appeared before the notary on November thirteenth. And then anybody could potentially challenge whether that appearance actually occurred. We can't challenge that an appearance didn't occur because we don't know when it occurred. So, you know, the, the thought here is that if somebody appears before a notary on November thirteenth, and you know, say that that notary was actually not in town on November thirteenth, you have a basis for challenge because you can actually see the date upon which the appearance occurred before the notary. All of these elements are required of section six dash one oh three A. None of it is discretionary. And the Act specifically states, the notarial act states that a notarial act must be evidenced, must be evidenced, by a certificate signed and dated by the notary public. Failure to actually have that, that date on there does not perfect the notary. The notary is a defective notary. And as such, since the notary itself is defective, the circulator's affidavit is likewise defective. Because we don't know when the circulator appeared before the notary. And again, while we appreciate the candidates submitting an affidavit, in my opinion, the affidavit should not even be counted or considered because the affidavit is an attempt to amend the petitions that were filed by the candidate. Because the petitions themselves failed to state that information, which is required information. So the attempt to amend the petitions should also be denied, and the affidavit should be stricken or given very little weight, as, as, in addition to the other exhibits submitted by the candidate. Those likewise, as previously argued, should be either stricken or given very little weight. And I think that that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Attorney Samuelson, do we go to rebuttals from both, or?
Um, usually the person making the motion gets the last word, so it would be a rebuttal, if any, from Attorney Spence.
Thank you, thank you. So with regards to the notary, uh, I'll address that first. I think the election code is very clear as to what is required with regards to the, the circulator's petitions. They need to be They need to be notarized in front of a notary authorized to administer notaries in the state of Illinois. It does not require that it be dated. The council's attempt to bring in the notary code is, I don't think is applicable. Even if it was, there is still substantial compliance with the requirements. The Circulator, the Circulators of those petitions appeared before a notary, indicating that they circulated the petitions, and the notary notarized them. That is what is required. They did not allege that there was some possible fraud, and therefore they cannot do so at this point. The code is not about a who, but it's about what occurred and who notarized it. That's it. And if the notary is authorized to give notaries in the state of Illinois, and they notarized it, that's the requirement under the election code. With regards to the address, Mr. Shaw moved into the Village of Dalton, as indicated by his voter registration card, was that he, I'm sorry, on December, about December 19th, December 12th of 2019. He moved to the address, as indicated, at 14434 Sanderson. His intent was to move into the Village of Dalton, and to remain in the Village of Dalton. He then relocated to the 1527 Berg Drive address, both in the Village of Dalton, both prior, at least one year prior to the February 23rd, 2021 election. With regards to the Berg address, I think it's undisputed that the objector issued their objections and served Mr. Shaw at the Berg address. He received it. So I don't know where they now say that, you know, he doesn't live there, if they were actually sent to that address. So I think that he has met the qualifications with regards to his residency. I don't, I think that's clear. His burden to establish that has been met. And the notary, as I indicated, is proper, and the objectors' petition should be stricken.
If I could just make a clarification for the record, we as the objectors did not serve anything. That is not the obligation of the objectors, that is the obligation of the Electoral Board. I have no knowledge as to how, where, when, or anything, how they perfected service. I just wanted the record to be clear on that.
But the fact of the matter is that Mr. Shaw was, did receive the objectors' petition at the 1527 Berg address.
Okay, I don't think that that's in evidence unless the Electoral Board has put that in evidence. I don't think there's been any evidence presented as to how Mr. Shaw was served, and whether he was served in person via email or anything else. I don't think that that's in evidence at this point.
Thank you for those arguments. Chairman House, could I please be recognized?
Yes, please.
So, under the rules that the board adopted, Rule Number 5 addresses preliminary motions. So people can bring preliminary motions, and what our rules say is that this motion will argue matters of law, and no evidence will be accepted as to the sufficiency of allegations. Now, the motion that was filed does not specify, and it's not required to under our rules, but it does not specify whether it was filed under Section 2-615 of the Code of Civil Procedure, Fit for Failure to State a Cause of Action, to 619, that there's an affirmative matter defeating the claim or motion for summary judgment, and our rules kind of permit for a combined thing. But I think I would make a motion at this time that we deny the motion to strike and dismiss, not because both, I mean, both the councils did a fabulous job of articulating arguments, but the problem that I'm having is that there's a factual issue in dispute, and people want to argue the facts. So the motion to strike and dismiss was not verified, and it's raising factual issues that are in dispute. I believe that the objectors' petition does sufficiently raise an objection, and that we have to have an evidentiary hearing on it. It might be, Mr. Spence, it might be absolutely true, everything that you're saying, but we need to get that evidence before the board in a sufficient manner, in a sufficient way. And I don't think that's pursuant to a motion to strike and dismiss. So I would make a motion that we deny the motion to strike and dismiss at this time and set for evidentiary hearing, and then both parties can bring in evidence and testimony regarding whatever they want, and we'll make a ruling on the merits, because I feel like I'm hearing arguments about the factual issues in dispute instead of on the law. So that would be my motion.
I hear your motion. Doogan, any comment before?
I second.
You second? Okay, hearing the motion being, the motion in the second, and the motion, and we restate it one more time for clarity, please?
Sure, so it would be a motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
Okay, that's motioned and then seconded. Hearing no further discussion. Clerk Doogan, can you call the roll?
Chairman House?
Aye.
Clerk Doogan, aye. Member Craftifer?
Aye.
And just for clarification, was that as to both issues?
Yes. Because I believe, like, with respect to the notary issue, there's the issue of whether or not it has the date in it, which we would have to make a finding about, and then there's also the issue about what the law is with respect to that. So I think, I mean, you have attached an affidavit, but our rules say we can't consider evidence at this point on the factual matters. Well, if you want to introduce that in evidentiary hearing, and then if the parties even want to adopt and incorporate some of the arguments that you've already made, I think that would be fine. I just think procedurally, at this time, the petition at least states a cause of action. I mean, did we also have another preliminary matter with respect to the issuance of subpoenas in this case?
There was a, there was a motion for subpoenas that was filed by the objector. The, we never set any sort of briefing, briefing schedule if there is any on any motions for subpoenas. The objector did indicate at the initial hearing that she would be filing this motion. So yes, that is also a preliminary matter that is up today.
And if I can also note for the record, there were no objections filed to the request for subpoenas.
There were no objections.
Yeah, you, Mr. Spence, you don't have any objection to the issuance of those subpoenas? Have the parties been able to see if they would stipulate as to what the subpoenas would actually show? Because I'm just afraid that counsel might have a hard time serving these within the time period we're going to need. And also, counsel, under the rules for service of subpoenas, we have the ability to either serve them by the sheriff, or the board can give you leave to have them served by the local police, provided that you pay the fee.
Yes, I would like to file, to serve them via local place. I would also be serving them, which I know isn't quote unquote service, but I would also be sending them to the parties that we are subpoenaing via email and fax, so that they could have it actually served.
Okay, have the parties actually been able to try to stipulate about the facts, though, about any of the subpoenas, or is that, have you had any conversations, or no?
We have not.
We certainly can. I would have.
That would be great, and I guess if there's no objection, then I would make a motion that the board issue the subpoenas, subject to the fact that the parties might not actually, or might not need to issue the subpoenas if they can stipulate regarding them.
Okay, motion heard. I will second the motion. Any discussion on it? Hearing none. Clerk Doogan, please call the roll.
Chairman House?
Aye.
Clerk Doogan, aye. Member Craftifer?
Aye.
Three, motion on.
Can we also clarify then that under our rules, that Ms. Nelson Jaworski can use the local police, provided the fee is, I mean, that's something with leave, I would say that would be permissible, since it's under our rules. And then, Mr. Spence, did you want to issue any subpoenas, or you're not going to need any?
We probably will, if I can, you know, request leave to get those out by close of business tomorrow.
That would be great, and why don't you just also confer with Ms. Nelson Jaworski? Because if you, if you guys stipulate as to what the documents may say, that might just save you both time.
That's fine, will do.
Are there any other preliminary matters that the board needs to consider today?
Don't believe there are any other preliminary matters.
No, those are the only preliminary matters.
So then, counsel, how much time would you need to prepare for an evidentiary hearing in this matter, seeing as we have to issue subpoenas, and you're going to have to get the information back, and some of the places you're seeking them from might not even be open for the holidays?
Very true, very true. The lovely timing of election cases.
What, may I ask, what is the deadline for having the hearings completed?
We still have a while before the ballot has to be certified, but we have to kind of do this as soon as possible. So, I mean, if it takes like a week or a little bit, you know, because we have two, just, we have the Christmas holiday, and then we have the New Year's holiday. I don't know if you would be prepared to do it in between Christmas and New Year's, or the first week of January, probably at the latest?
I would suggest, since we've still got to talk about the subpoenas, and since Mr. Spence wants to potentially issue additional subpoenas by the end of, or submit a request for the issuance of additional subpoenas by the end of the day tomorrow, my suggestion would be if we could go into the first week of January, maybe January 4th or 5th, that's that Monday, or Tuesday. That way, hopefully, we'll have the whole subpoena thing done and completed by then, and hopefully we'll have some responses, or at least can give the board a status as to what's going on at that point.
You want to do a status at that point?
Well, I think we could do a status with the intention of going to, I mean, the practicality of it is, you know, at some point, the Electoral Board is obviously going to have to say, okay, you need to go to hearing, we can't wait for you to get your subpoenas, because we have to certify the ballot, we can't sit here. And, you know, there is obviously a timing issue. I think that if we set it for a status and possible hearing for the 4th or 5th, I think that we can give a status, and if we're ready to go, you know, maybe we can jointly notify Attorney Samuelson that we'll be ready to go on, you know, whatever date it is, and we go to hearing. So I think if we just keep it a little flexible, that would be my suggestion to the board.
That's fine.
Well, I think so, I mean, we need to really, we kind of need to set a hearing. I think if we wanted to do maybe a status next week, but otherwise, I think we should set it for a hearing, like maybe the 4th. And if for some reason you don't have the documents you need, I'm hoping the parties will be able to stipulate, so that some of the subpoenas will be unnecessary. Otherwise, if you think we need to do a status, I would say maybe if we would do that the 30th, to see, but I don't think there's really any point in doing a status.
Oh, don't, doesn't the board need to approve Attorney Spence's motion for subpoenas? Because even though he asked for them orally, the rules do require a written request for the issuance. So we could have that, and then have a status.
I was looking in the rules, does it require us to issue an order for subpoenas? I couldn't find anything that said that.
The parties with the approval of the electoral, or, oh, correct.
I mean, I guess do is, I mean, we could actually grant him leave to issue subpoenas, subject to, you know, the absence of any objection from Ms. Nelson. She would still be able to file an objection, and if she did, we could convene a special hearing on that.
I'd be agreeable to that.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to save us as much time, but keep us moving if we can. Ms. Samuelson, do you think that would be okay?
Can you repeat that?
I mean, if we just, we can make a motion now to grant Mr. Spence leave to issue subpoenas, provided he files a request, and there's no objection from Ms. Nelson Jaworski. And then if he files something that's objectionable, she could file motion, and we could set like a special meeting to reconvene for just that, if needed. But if the parties are working together, maybe we wouldn't need that. And then we could just set a hearing for the 4th.
Okay.
Does that work to the parties and for the other Electoral Board members?
Yep, the 4th works for me.
Works for me also.
And that would be for hearing, correct?
Correct, yes.
So status on the 30th, and hearing on the 4th.
Well, I don't know if we need, I think we would only have a, I don't think we would need to meet before the 4th, unless there's some problem related to the subpoenas, and one of the parties came to Ms. Samuelson.
Raise it.
Yeah.
Well, just because of the Open Meetings Act, I would suggest that the, maybe the Electoral Board set a deadline, I mean, of course, I'm imposing a deadline upon myself now, but hey, why not? Maybe the Electoral Board set a deadline for any objections to the subpoenas to be filed by Monday, the 28th, so if we need a hearing on the objections, we could do that on the 30th, and compliance with the Open Meetings Act, we'd still have the 48 hours to give notice.
That's, that's fine.
I'm not objection.
Okay.
And then if there is no objection, there would be no need to do that. Then, could our hearing be at 10 o'clock on the 4th?
Let me see here, it might be. If we can make it a little later, 11 or noon.
I'm open all day.
All right, noon would work.
One issue that I think needs to be discussed due to COVID, I would imagine our hearings have all been remote, but an evidentiary hearing would, would, does, do people, is the request to have that in person? Would the board want the hearing to be in person or remote, since they are going to have to judge the credibility of anybody who's testifying?
Yeah, I think, you know, the circuit court has been conducting hearings via Zoom and presenting evidence. I don't think that that would, you know, should be an issue.
And the reason I raise that now is just for planning purposes. Planning for a Zoom hearing is very different than planning for an in-person hearing. So it would be, I think, the decision by the board as to whether or not they want to continue with, once we get to the evidentiary hearing, if they want to continue that via Zoom, or if they are requiring an in-person hearing.
The evidence at hand, it seems like it's more documentation versus testimony, am I right?
I would say for the most, with the possible exception of, I don't know who Mr. Spence is going to call him, assuming he might be calling the notary.
The notary, and possibly the candidate as well.
Okay.
In regards to his residency.
So do either of the parties have an objection to an evidentiary hearing by Zoom?
No, no objection.
I would just, my only concern would be that if there is going to be testimony of any party, I would want them to be viewable, like we all are right now, not, you know, not participating by phone, so that if they're testifying, we have the ability to make a, we need like a clear view of them to try to, you know, read them, to determine whether or not there's actual, well, you know, determine the credibility of the witness. And I would also want some testimony or something indicating that the person is either in the room alone or with their counsel, just because I have already had experiences with this, where we were doing interdisciplinary interviews of people by Zoom, and it appeared they were being coached by other people in the room. So I mean, I think we might want them to show us if anyone else is in the room and testify about that. If those conditions would be met, I wouldn't have a problem doing this remotely.
And if I can just add one more thing, that if there's any certified documents that are going to be tendered, or anything that obviously, that those be tendered to all parties prior to, or if there's any documents that are going to be testified to at a hearing, so if there's, you know, a book, a picture, whatever, that the witness doesn't just then hold something up and be like, see, this says this, or, you know, something of that nature, we want to be able to view the documents beforehand. So if we could possibly have something in the order that says, you know, all evidence that's going to be presented must be presented at least 24 hours beforehand, unless previously disclosed.
So, under the board rules, it's Board Rule 5, all witness lists and all evidence for both parties' cases and she must be presented to the board at least 48 hours prior to the time of the hearing. It must be served upon the board's attorney and its members in accordance with these rules, in addition to any service requirements provided by these rules or by law.
Okay, that works.
Does that work?
Yep, thank you.
Can I raise one more issue, though? So the attachments to Mr. Spence's motion today, the one that was from the licensing facility. The, the one that was from the licensing facility, I couldn't even read my copy. So I think we need to be careful. I don't know, Ms. Samuelson, if you could read it and just on the transmission to me, it didn't come through or if it was really not legible in what you had either. And then in addition, the affidavit that you attached, it came through in really weird, like hieroglyphic format in, in parts of it. And again, I don't know. It was, so yeah, I don't.
It was a PDF. Let me see.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have the, the, I don't have a hieroglyphic affidavit on my end. I will say that the, um, the voter exhibit A, it, it, as indicated in the argument, the top of it is cut off. It is a little blurry. But, so I guess that, that.
This is what I received.
Wow.
This is my attachment that I printed up.
Is that how it appeared on your screen as well?
Yeah, so I don't know. I don't know what.
That's the benefit of issuing all exhibits 48 hours prior to the hearing if there are any issues with transmission of exhibits that any issues can be sent to me and I will then communicate with the parties in getting a better copy.
Awesome.
I don't know what, I don't know what happened there.
So.
I could still read under the hieroglyphics what your affidavit actually said. It was just a little strange, so.
So just for recap, we set the hearing for January, the proposed date for January 4th, 2021 at 11:00 AM?
It was said noon.
Noon, okay. Via Zoom. Um, no objection to the hearing via Zoom, but the witnesses must be present on video and there must be testimony that the individual is alone or with their counsel. And all documents, all evidence and witness lists have to be provided at least 48 hours prior in accordance with rule, board rule number five.
And also I believe that Mr. Spence was going to issue his request for subpoenas.
I close the business tomorrow. We'll get him out.
And then if Ms. Nelson Jaworski had any objection, she would file them by 12:28. Can we say by 3:00 PM that day?
Sure.
And that if necessary, we'll have a hearing, I guess it would be the evening of the 30th and if, if not, then we, we don't need that. And do we already make a motion to cover enough of that? Or is there?
No motion has been made.
Well, I make a motion then to adopt the, that timeline that we just discussed and to direct the attorney to issue an order about the parameters of the testimony with the deadlines to be circulated to us and then distributed to everybody.
Okay, I second the motion. No discussion. Clerk Dugan, please call the roll.
Chairman House?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Member Craftifer?
Aye. You said it right.
About 300th time. Let's see, about 301.
So three ayes and I think we need a motion to, for the schedule as well or are we, are we recessing until January 4th? Attorney Samuelson?
I make a motion that we recess until.
Okay, a motion to recess until January 4th, I second. Clerk Dugan, please call the roll.
So soon, okay. Chairman House?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Member Craftifer?
Aye.
And then, um, the two previous cases, we were going to set a date to come back for the signing of the order now. That does need to be in person, the actual physical signing. So do we have the, just the order granting the withdrawal of the objections? So do we have a date, knowing, now knowing that we're doing a Zoom hearing on the fourth? Any proposals for those dates?
Why does, did, why does that have to be in person?
Um, because I think it, it does, it all has to be signed, it has to be signed at the same time, correct? I, I.
No, it doesn't. It, we can actually sign even different pages. So the election code says we have to render a decision in an open meeting, which if we're doing an open meeting by Zoom, it's still okay. And maybe we can recess those until like 11, you know, 50 that day or something. Um.
So is the.
Do our rules say? Is there something in our rules that say that we need to be in person for that?
Let me, let me get an answer. If we could come back in, at 2:25, just so I can look into this really quickly. I might be misinformed. Is that okay with everybody? All right, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, so I have an answer. I was incorrect. The way that, um, we can do it is I will send a copy of the decision with signature pages to every member of the board and then they can sign it on the Zoom call and then show on the Zoom that their signature page has been signed. Um, no, signature pages will then need to be emailed, signed pages emailed back to me, et cetera, et cetera. So we can do this via Zoom. It does not need to be in person. So do we want to set the other two cases for January 4th sometime that day? Or do we want to set it for a different date? For the signing of the decision?
Okay, don't we set it for January 4th at like 11:45 or 11:50? I don't think it'll take us very long to do that, right?
Mary Kay, did you hear all of that? I apologize.
No, I did hear it, yes.
Okay, so set it for January 4th at 11:45? Does that work for the members of the board?
Yes.
Okay.
I must say, everybody's so agreeable. I pray this spirit continues.
All right, I don't know that we have anything further and we already recessed the 2003 matter to the fourth at noon, correct?
So you, you'll notify Mr. Gianopoulos and Mr. Abassi about the continued dates?
Yes, I'll send, I'll notify them.
Okay, great. Well, thank you all and have a Merry Christmas.
You too.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays. All right, um. We're actually running behind for our next hearing. So once Mayor Rogers gets on the line.
Hi, Mayor Rogers. Hi, how are you? I do not have the documents here for, this is for the clerk's hearing, correct?
For the Parker hearing, yes. Do you want me to?
Parker? Hold on, baby.
We can do one of two things. Either I can email them to you so you can print them out again or if you want, you can hand the conducting of the hearing over to me.
What case is that?
It is 2020 DMOEV 04.
Oh, I do have it. Okay, but you can, you can handle the particulars if you'd like.
Okay, do you want to call the docket to order?
I will.
We have, I think Trustee Henyard should be.
Oh, that's right, we're missing Trustee Henyard, so we do need to wait. Thank you, Trustee House for noting that. Um, looks like there's an iPhone present on the hearing. I just don't know if that is, there's.
Yeah, Trustee Henyard, I'm here. Hi, guys.
Hi, I didn't mean to forget you. All right, now I think we're ready to go on the Parker matter. So if the mayor would like to call the hearing, tell the docket.
Like, okay, I'd like to call to order. I'd like to call to order the Electoral Board for case number.
I'm still here, I just got it on mute.
Excuse me, I'd like to call to order Electoral Board meeting for Park, Belcher workers versus Parker, 2020 DM 0 E B 04. Okay, statement of the findings in person, meeting, please be advised that on December 11th, 2020, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency posed by the COVID-19 pandemic and has further issued executive orders implementing further enhanced mitigation measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to Section 70 of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and the Rules of Procedure, and as chair of this board, I have determined that holding a meeting, excuse me, entirely in person that, that is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Opens Meeting Act is neither practical nor prudent because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference and without requiring the physical presence of a quorum. I further find that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than 10 people at a regular meeting location in an accessible, hygienic and legally compliant matter is not feasible. Alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to hear all discussion, testimony and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote and verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Opens Meeting Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meeting's public recording. I am Riley Rogers. I'm the chair of the Electoral Board. Also serving on the Electoral Board is Senior Trustee Tiffany Henyard and Second Senior Trustee Jason House. These members are provided for by the Illinois Election Code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates' nomination papers. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll?
Chairman Rogers?
Here.
Trustee Henyard?
Present.
And Trustee House?
Present.
All members of the board, here we have a quorum established. Adoption of the Rules of Procedure.
We don't need to go there. The next step would, because we already adopted the rules, the next step would be asking the attorneys to introduce themselves.
Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
And for the record, Keith Spence on the half, on behalf of the candidate, Andrea Parker.
And I'm Amber Samuelson, the Electoral Board Attorney. Mayor Rogers, would, do you want me to continue or?
Go ahead and continue.
Okay. Um, the next on the agenda is public comment. There are no questions or comments related to this hearing. A recap of case status and filings. The initial hearing was held on December 15th, 2020 and case management order was issued subsequent thereto. The candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December 18th, 2020. The objector filed a response to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on December 21st, 2020. Next is the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss the objector's verified petition. And, um, at this time, assuming everybody is ready, I would ask that the candidate argue their motion. Mayor Rogers, I don't see you. Are you still present?
I am here.
Okay, just wanted to double check. Um, all right, so if the candidate's attorney would like to make an argument on their motion.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Chairman Rogers. As indicated, the respondent, Andrea Parker, is a candidate for the office of clerk of the village of Dalton to be voted upon on February 23rd, 2021, consolidated primary election. A candidate, Parker, has submitted 43 pages of nominating petitions with significantly more than the 25 necessary valid signatures required. A petitioner, objector, has filed objections to the nominating petitions based on the allegation that the petitions are invalid because the notary is not dated on the circulator's affidavit. We believe that the petitioner's objector's petition fails on. objector's petition fails on matters of law and should be dismissed and summary decision issued on the pleading. Now, the issue raised is that the notarial signature is not dated, but admits by the absence of an objection that the circulator appeared before the notary as no allegation of fraud is alleged in the objector's petition. The certification of the petition sheet merely requires that the document was signed and sworn to by an officer authorized to administer oaths in Illinois. It is undisputed that the candidate signed the circulator statement in the presence of the notary and a stamp and signature of a notary public was placed upon the document indicating her jurisdiction and authority to notarize the document. The objector simply states that the notary signature is not dated. Now, as noted, there are under Section 710, there are mandatory and directory requirements under the Election Code. Section 710 of the Election Code is a mandatory rather than a directory statute. Illinois Supreme Court has acknowledged that substantial compliance can satisfy mandatory statutory requirements governing statements of candidacy. This court has applied the doctrine of substantial compliance to the mandatory provisions under the Election Code pursuant to Cunningham v. Schafling. Our courts have also repeatedly recognized that substantial rather than strict compliance is the proper standard by which to evaluate deviations from certain mandatory provisions of the Election Code. But I must note that the Election Code does not mandate that the notary signature be dated, simply that the candidate appeared before the notary certifying and swearing on the oath that they were the individual circulating the document, and it was properly notarized. The provisions of the Election Code are designed to protect the integrity of the electoral process, and that access to a place on the ballot is a substantial right not to be lightly denied. The essential act required under the Election Code is the personal appearance of the circulator before a notary. The fact that the date on the notarization is missing does not impugn the integrity of the oath-taking process. The circulators appeared before the notary and stated under oath that they were the individual that circulated the petition in question. In the instant case, circulators did not in fact take an oath before a person who they believed was authorized to administer oaths, and who actually in fact was, supplying all they supplied all the information required of them by the statute. Thus, it is clear that the circulators believed that they could be subjected to perjury prosecutions if the statements they made prove false. That is the purpose of the notary and to have it notarized by an individual authorized to notarize documents in the state of Illinois. The objector has alleged no evidence of fraud or corruption on the part of either the circulator or the notary and cannot do so at this time. Therefore, we believe that the objector's petition should be stricken and dismissed as a matter of law.
Attorney Jaworski?
Thank you. So just in response, and I will try to be brief. The first order of business is in the, interestingly, we just argued this in a prior case in the objections against candidate Shaw. And in that case, it was pointed out that Rule 5 of the Board's rules provide that.
I will object to that, counsel, as relevant as to what a prior Board indicated or ruled upon. I don't think that has any relevance unless it's raised by a member of this particular Board.
Oh, I think I'm allowed to raise what the rules say.
You're allowed to raise.
And the Board's allowed to determine whether it's going to agree with those rules, and I'm just, to make my record.
I would, you are allowed to raise what the rules say. This is, however, a new Board. So if you want to state something that's in the rules, the rules have been adopted by this Board.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So I just wanted to point out to the Board that the Rule 5 states that candidates may file a written answer to an objector's petition filed against such candidate, but no such answer is required. Preliminary motions and objections to an objector's petition in the nature of a motion to strike or dismiss, the objections will be heard first in order. This motion will argue matters of law and no evidence will be accepted as to the sufficiency of the allegations except as to the registration status of the objector and other matters of law in the objector's petition. If appropriate, the Board may, or the Board in its discretion, may also entertain motions in the form of for summary judgment. So I just wanted to point that out to the Board. I think that this motion at this time, because it does contain an issue of fact as it relates to the affidavit that was attached, arguably, it's an improper motion. But notwithstanding that, I'm going to go ahead and make my arguments as to the merits of the motion, and the Board can certainly make its decision as to whether it wants to consider the motion to dismiss with the affidavit, consider the motion to dismiss without the affidavit, or set this for evidentiary hearing. I just want to advise the Board of its own rules. So that said, this motion, in my opinion, is. Let me back up, actually. So let's go to the merits of the objections against the candidate. So the objector's petition states that the candidate had failed to have their petitions properly notarized. The failure in the notarization is the lack of a date that states the date upon which the act of notarization occurred. So candidates in his motion, or I'm sorry, candidates' counsel in his motion to strike and dismiss presents a few cases, and I'd like to kind of go through some of the cases as well as some of the arguments. So Section 710 of the Illinois Election Code provides in pertinent part that when it's talking about the circulator's statement, the circulator's affidavit, says that such statements shall be sworn to before some officer authorized to administer oaths in this state. And again, that's from Section 710 of the Illinois Election Code. Section 2 of the Oaths and Affirmation Act, which states who can actually administer oaths and affirmations, essentially provides that a deputy clerk, county clerk, secretary of state notaries, public, and other persons certified under the Illinois Certified Shorthanded Reporters Act of 1984 may administer all oaths of office and all other oaths authorized or required by any officer or other person and take affidavits and depositions concerning any matter or thing, process or proceeding, commenced or to be commenced or pending in any court before them or in any occasion where any affidavit or deposition is authorized or required by law to be taken. The Notary Act then states, so let me back up. So the person who did the acts of notary in this case are, was Anita Gweringer, and she had actually done all of the notarial acts on the bottom of petition, or so the petition so purported to say. Section 6103 of the Illinois Public Notary Act provides in relevant part that a notary, sorry, my computer keeps jumping all over. I'm trying to, I apologize. A notarial act must be evidenced by a certificate signed and dated by the notary public. So for a notarial act to be perfected, there needs to be a signature of the notary as well as a date affixed to the notarial act, to the jurat, to the thing that's on the bottom of those petition sheets. In his response, objector, candidate's counsel cites to the case of Sintak versus Kozibowski, which is 230 ILAP 3, 969. And in that case, the Illinois appellate court addressed the question of whether an improperly completed notary jurat, where the notary's name had appeared twice in the jurat, whether that was sufficient and whether that complied with law. So in that case, in the spot where it says circulator's name and then signature of notary, the notary had actually put their name in both those spots. So the question was, does that then invalidate the notary? So the court took a pretty in-depth look at this, and you know, there's not a ton of case law, so they really, but they delved into what they could find. So the court stated, the statute accords with custom, and that's specifically, they were talking about the Illinois Public Notary Act right there. So they say, the statute accords with custom. Courts generally view a jurat as merely part of an affidavit where the officer certifies that it was sworn before him. It is not the affidavit, rather, the jurat is simply evidence of the fact that the affidavit was properly sworn by the affiant. Again, it's evidence of the fact that the affidavit was properly sworn to by the affiant. Accordingly, where an affiant is otherwise identified, courts may overlook mere clerical errors such as naming the wrong person in the jurat or even omitting from the jurat the affiant's name entirely. So for instance, that would be a situation where you've got, you know, just a regular affidavit where it says, I, Tiffany Nelson Jaworski, being under oath, do hereby swear as follows. And then it's got all the information. And then at the bottom, if the notary messed up and didn't put my name at the bottom, then that would be, that's the substantial compliance that this case was allowing. So the court then went on a little further, though, to actually, you know, really get into what makes a notary valid. So the court reasoned when they decided to allow this specific set of petitions to continue on, and this was not a candidate's petitions, this was, I believe, for a referendum. So when they decided to let the petitions be considered valid, the court looked at the notary and the court reasoned that the jurat met the statutory requirements of Section 6-103 of the Notary Public Act. The jurat contained the information required by subsection A and sufficiently showed that a circulator swore an oath before a notary, meeting the requirements of subsection B2 and B3. In this case, all we have is potential compliance with Sections B2 and B3. We have no compliance with Section 6103A. Section 6103A requires that the notary jurat be dated. The court in Sintak clearly states that the statutory requirements in that case were met, and that's what actually allowed them to say, okay, so this minor deviation where they actually put the notary's name twice, where the circulator should have been there, that's okay, because that's not going to change it. Or a situation in which there's an affidavit, and at the beginning of the affidavit, it introduces who the affiant is, but then it doesn't have that information at the end where the jurat is, then that's okay, too, because that still gives the information that people need to determine what exactly occurred. In this case, we've heard statements about the circulators knowing that they're potentially subjecting themselves to perjury. Well, first, I must submit that we don't know what the circulators think. The circulators aren't here. We don't know if one of them was like, oh, great, this isn't dated, so I think I'm going to get away with it. We don't know what they're thinking. They could have, you know, it could have been anything. But the fact of the matter is, Section 6-103 of the Illinois Public Notary Act requires that the affidavit be dated. It says must. It is not discretionary. It is must. Now, since we have the requirement that the jurat be dated, the implication of that requirement is that the lack of the date on the actual petitions themselves invalidates the circulator's affidavit, which thereby invalidates the petitions themselves. The candidate's failure and the campaign's failure, if you will, to ensure that the notary performed their job sufficiently and did what they were supposed to do in the notary jurat dooms these petitions. We don't know when these individuals appeared before a notary. We have no idea. We don't know if the notary was out of town at that time and somebody took her stamp. We don't know any of that because there's not a date upon which we can actually look at to see, okay, so these acts were performed on this date. We don't see her book, her notary book. None of that is present, and we should not have to look outside the four corners of the petitions to determine whether the petitions have, or whether the law has been complied with as it relates to the nomination petitions. Again, you guys are confined to the four corners of the petitions. Basically, the affidavit that was submitted and the attempts to state that the notary jurat was, or the notary affixed the information, and yes, she failed to put the date, but she performed her notarial acts on November 13, in my opinion, is an attempt to amend the petitions, which should not be allowed. We are confined to the four corners of the petitions. They cannot be, and as such, the candidate has not complied with the mandatory provisions of both the Illinois Notary Act, the Illinois Public Notary Act, as well as the Illinois Election Code. Thank you very much.
May I?
I was going to say, suggest that, did you have any rebuttal across?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, the Election Code is very clear as to what is required as to the notary. It's not a requirement of a win, but a what and a who. What was done and who did it? What was done was the circulator presented themselves before a notary, swore under oath that they notarized, I mean, that they circulated these petitions. The notary took that oath and administered that oath and signed and notarized the document and stamped it. That's what's required under the Election Code. There is no requirement that the date be posted on there in the Election Code. No fraud. Again, no fraud was ever alleged that either the notary was not present in front of the circulator. None of that is alleged. No fraud on the part of the circulator or the notary. So the requirements of the notary on the circulator's petition affidavit, the notary was posted on there, and it met the substantial requirements of the Election Code, if not the letter of the Election Code. Therefore, without the affidavit of the, which was attached to our motion, even without the affidavit where the notary indicated that the date that they notarized the documents was November 13, 2020, even without the affidavit, the notary met the letter of the law under the Election Code, the notary was clear, and therefore, the motion to dismiss should be sustained.
Mayor, if I could be recognized? Okay, and I was on the previous board that where we made a ruling, and I know that's not completely relevant to this, but I would do a motion consistent with Rule 5 that the motion to dismiss be, to dismiss the motion to strike the petitions. So I think that these are questions of fact and not questions of law. So I think that we should move forward to a hearing.
I agree.
I I'd like to make a comment. Before I make a comment, Attorney Jaworski, did you want to respond to that with Mrs. Spence at the?
Well, I mean, technically, it says motion, so I think if I respond, he then gets a chance to respond again. So I don't want to belabor the point. I would just say that in my opinion, it's not substantial compliance, that the Election Code did not contemplate somebody not complying with the notary jurat. I think that, you know, if you're going to have something notarized and you're going to have it be sworn under oath, you need to comply with the laws that provide how something is sworn under oath. And if you don't, then it is not a valid swearing, and therefore, there would not be substantial compliance. That would be my only reply.
Okay.
I would just like to indicate for the record that I believe this is a question of law and not of fact. And what is the requirement under the Election Code for the notarization of the circulator's affidavit? That's a question of law. And I think that what we presented in our motion certainly indicates that. No other, really, no other facts are necessary.
If I may, Mayor? Um, I went back and looked at my notes from our initial hearing where the parties were to state whether the issue being presented is a question of law or a question of fact. And I do have it in my notes that this is a purely legal question. The issue presented to the Board is whether or not the lack of a date on the, where the affidavit is signed that was witnessed, if that lack of a date means that the candidate did not comply with the Election Code. That is a, that is a legal question. Um, so that is the, that is the question being presented by the Board, presented to the Board as to whether or not that is the board as to whether or not that is a sufficient objection, and and whether or not, what, whether, it's a question of law. Now, so, so just a, just a point of clarification, there isn't really a factual issue being presented despite the addition of the affidavit to the motion, that if you don't ignore the ignore the affidavit attached to the motion and just look at what is being, what is being stated by the candidate, the candidate is saying that even if the petition isn't dated by the notary, that the case law states that the, what is it? The case law states that courts have generally excused clerical errors in notarial juris where the affiant is identified. So, he's saying that this isn't sufficient to knock the candidate off the ballot. Obviously, the objector is arguing in the opposite, but that is a question that can be decided just based on the law. Does the law require that the that the petitions, when they're notarized, have a date? Or does the law say that, no, that is not required?
For clarification, for clarification on my end, according to the election code, is there a a prescribed, if you will, template or a prescribed form that identifies that the date? Of course, it identifies that they have to be notarized, but it identifies the fact that it must have a date on it. I'm not sure if there is a template that the election code has put out or that they actually use to say to follow in in the duplication of these forms that that are required, petition forms that are required. If someone can answer that.
If I may, there are in various parts of the election code, you know, some sort of prescriptions as to the the forms required and provided. As it relates specifically to Section seven ten, there is some stuff in regards to the the circulator. However, it comes in the beginning of Section seven ten, and it's actually seemingly related specifically to committeemen. But it can, it gives you an idea, and it does say, signed, subscribe and sworn to me on blank date. In addition to that, later on in Section seven ten, where it looks at the affidavit that's signed in the statement of candidacy, it also says, sign personally known to me on this date. If you then go to Section, I believe it's ten four, maybe, of the election code, or ten five? Ten five has the same prescriptions as it relates to the date. Each one of them does require a date. And then, just really quick, I wanted to to respond to the issue of whether it's an issue of law or fact. I agree that it's an issue of law, and I think that the candidate then created the issue of fact by adding the affidavit. So, if the board wants to discount the affidavit, or if the candidate wants to withdraw the affidavit, then I think we can proceed forward on a, you know, full hearing without the affidavit. I don't think the affidavit actually helps anything. That's my personal opinion, but obviously, the candidate's got to make his case, and so I leave it up to the candidate.
I think that I would leave it up to the board. I won't withdraw the affidavit, but I think it's up to the board whether or not they, what weight they give it, or if they give it any weight at all. But the 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 statements in the code or the forms, the format that's listed in the in the code is not mandatory. I think it's simply advisory as to how it should be structured. And again, there is no requirement, there is no no form with regards to the circulator's affidavit that it must be be dated, and that's, I think, an answer directly to your question. There is no form indicating that the date must appear on the circulator's affidavit, simply that the the circulator appear before a notary and swear under oath that they circulated those the document.
Mayor, if I could?
Go ahead.
Okay, yeah, well, I'll bring up, because the affidavit is what made me lean to that it's fact versus law. So, I think that, to me, makes the the difference on, are we making a decision on the law today, or are we going into the fact part? So, I was kind of interested, Attorney Spence, in your response to, do you want to include or not include it? I don't know that the board would, should encourage you to have what you will or will not including your, and you're part of the argument. So, I want to, so my question is, are we including the affidavit or not? Because then, if we're not including it, then I agree, it's a statement of law, and we can, and I would, I'd be comfortable making a decision.
I, I, I like.
Go ahead, Chair.
But I like to make a comment in regards to where notary seals are required on other legal documents. And my recollection that any, in areas where I've had to have stuff notarized, different things notarized, it also included the date. Now, whether this is a formality or whether it's a requirement of law, I think that all documents, at least all the ones that I've seen, that require a notary seal, also requires the date that the that the documents were notarized. I'm not sure if that's has any bearing on this particular case. That's why I mentioned the factor earlier in regards to templates for the petitions and/or is there, in fact, a a requirement by the election code that requires a date on the document? Now, in regards to what Trusty House mentioned, the fact that the affidavit, the affidavit would certainly be included as, if we went to a hearing, would certainly be included as, at least I think you would include it as part of your evidence to be considered. That's all I have to comment on.
Mayor Rogers, if I may, I I would, again, advise the board that this is a purely legal question. I don't know that the affidavit, the, I don't know that having an affidavit saying that this was signed on this date changes the objector's objection, because the objector is saying that the rules require, you know, require a date. However, Attorney Attorney Spence has said that the rules simply require that the individual sign before an officer authorized to administer oaths in Illinois. So, it's, again, it's a purely legal question. I don't think the, and there isn't a question of fact here, that there's, you know, does the, on the document, is the date required to be there? If it is required to be there, then, you know, the objector's petition can, you know, then we would redo the argument as to the petition. If the date is not required to be there, then there is a basis to dismiss this petition. Now, I will say that there, you know, there, Attorney Spence got into substantial compliance versus strict compliance, whether something is, you know, required or suggested, and that, again, of the the cases cited by both parties, there was an issue where the the notary, in one way or another, did not strictly comply. They signed on the wrong line, two people signed, et cetera. In both of those cases, the courts found that generally, courts have generally excused clerical errors and notarial juris where the affiant is identified. So, essentially, what they're saying is that issues with the notary, you know, as long as there's a name of, yes, I am a notary and I was signed before, that, 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 that that is sufficient. But, again, this is a, this is a purely legal question that can, that can be decided just as to, does the, does, is there a requirement that this date be included?
Okay, so, I mean, why don't we just make the motion if we want to go forward with the hearing?
Well, the the motion would be whether or not to grant the motion to strike or and dismiss. So, you can either grant it or deny it.
Well, I previously made the motion that we deny the motion to dismiss.
Yes, and I agree, so seconded.
It is a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Madam Clerk, you want to take the role on this? Unless there's any further discussion?
No, you guys said everything.
Chair Rogers? And the motion to deny, motion to strike and dismiss?
I'm voting to deny.
That's an I? Okay, Trusty House?
Aye.
Trusty Henry?
Aye.
Okay. Attorney Samson?
So, then, since you deny the motion to strike and dismiss, I would say that because this is a purely legal question, the next thing would be to vote on whether to sustain or overrule the objections made in the objector's petition. I don't know if the parties are ready to argue that, if we want to set that, or, I think, I guess, that that would be a question for the attorneys.
I mean, I'm fine with moving forward. You know, I would just like to, you know, offer a couple additional points of clarification, but otherwise, I think that the board is pretty sufficiently apprised of the status of the law. I'm sure Attorney Spence would probably want to offer a couple additional points, but that's really it for me.
Yeah, we can, we can move forward. You know, and I, and I don't know if the board will need time to rule upon that, you know, rule upon objections after these final arguments with regards to that that issue of law.
You want to argue today, or you want to try to set over for a date?
It's up to the board, where I think we're both stating that we're fine with arguing it today.
Okay, do we have another matter up after this?
We do, we have, we have another matter that was up at two thirty.
I mean, is that the only one up after this?
There are three cases that were all set for two thirty, because I think the arguments are identical.
They are.
All right, if I'm prepared to go forward, just, you know, get this out of the way if we can, you know, if everybody's in agreement.
I am so.
Yes.
Okay, then, since it is my objector's petition, I believe I have the burden now, so I get the first and last word. I'm not going to resummarize every single argument I just made. I just want to make a couple additional points of clarification.
Okay, before we go forward, is Ms. Court Reporter, are you okay with this? Okay, she says yes. All right, I'm sorry.
She's been doing this a long time.
Well, I didn't know, I didn't know if there was any time constraints or anything.
So, thank you. I just wanted to offer a couple points of clarification. In in the Sintac case or Sintoc case, that I think, that case is very illuminating on the fact pattern we have here. In that case, the court found that the notary, when they put their name in the circulator's name spot, as well as in the signature portion for the notary, they found that to be substantial compliance. So, they found that that complied with enough of the statute so as to not cause an issue. However, what they did state, and again, I think that this is a very, very important statement, and this is on page nine hundred and seventy-four of the decision, they state that the jurat met the statutory requirements of six dash one oh three of the Notary Act. The jurat contained the information required by subsection A and sufficiently showed that the circulator swore an oath before a notary, meeting the requirement of subsection B two or B three. Of all the cases that are out there related to minor defects in the notary, what's missing is that there is not a case out there that says that the note, that the date of the notarization was missing. In fact, I'm not even, I don't even think that there's a case out there that says that the notary signature being missing is okay. Section six dash one oh three A clearly requires that the notary, the Notorial Act, must be evidenced by a certificate signed and dated by a notary public. And again, the appellate court in Sintoc stated that the note, that one of their findings and one of their reasons for issuing the findings that they did and keeping that notary and finding that notary, in fact, to be valid, was the fact that the jurat met the statutory requirements of six dash one oh three A. In order to be a valid Notorial Act, it has to be signed and dated by the notary. That is step one of the Notorial Act. And the additional provisions in the Notary Act, let me pull it up really quick. Sorry. The additional provisions in six dash one oh three, where they're talking about Sections B one, B two, and B three, Section B is the certificate of the Notorial Act is sufficient if it meets the requirements of subsection A, and if it is in the short form set by six dash one oh five, and is in a form otherwise prescribed by law, and sets forth the actions of the notary, and those are sufficient to meet the requirements of the designated Notorial Act. The Act goes on to further state that at the time of the Notorial Act, the notary shall officially sign every notary certificate affixed a rubber seal, clearly and legibly. It goes on, you know, using black ink, so it's capable of photographic reproduction. And goes on with some other requirements. But the one thing, the one central thing that is clear, especially in the Sintac case and the cases coming after, is that the act of signing and dating the jurat is essential. There is no substantial compliance with that. This is, this is something similar, like, you know, forgetting to put your name on your nominating petitions, or forgetting to state the dates upon which you circulated your nominating petitions, or failing to put the office on your nominating petitions. Well, there are certain things that are allowed under substantial compliance. I submit that there is no case law to, that that is out there that says that a failure to sign and and date, specifically to date the notary, is substantial compliance. The failure to date the notary completely invalidates the circulator's affidavits. Without the circulator's affidavits, the petitions themselves are invalid, and as such, the candidate's nominating petition should be stricken. Thank you.
Again, the election code is clear as to what is required, and as Counsel also indicated, there are a list of items that are required with regards to a circulator's affidavit, that they be notarized, that it be signed in the presence of a notary, but nowhere does it say that it has to be dated. Even if the the requirement was specifically mandated in the election code that the notary be dated, even if, I think that there would still be substantial compliance with the mandatory provisions of the of the election court if that was the case, but it's not. The court has applied the doctrine of substantial compliance to mandatory provisions. So, there is no mandatory provision that it be dated, just that the note, that it be notarized in front of a notary authorized to issue notaries in the state of Illinois, or in the jurisdiction in which it was notarized. Our courts have repeatedly recognized that substantial, rather than strict compliance, is the proper standard by which to evaluate deviations from certain even mandatory provisions of the election code. That is a case of Jackson versus Kosky, three fifty-two ILAB third, eight sixty-one. The Illinois appellate court has, again, generally excused clerical errors in notarial jurats where the affiant is otherwise correctly identified, and that is what we have here. The affiant, the candidate swore under oath in front of a notary that he or she was the individual that circulated the petitions. That is what is required. Nothing more. We don't need to go outside of of the election code to make determinations as to what what is required. It's stated. It's stated very clearly that that is the requirement. That's all. If there was more, they would have said so. And the provisions of the election code are designed to protect the integrity of the electoral process. And that access to a place on the ballot is a substantial right, not likely to be denied. Out of everything that has, that's been done, there's no challenges on the signature. There's no challenge that the, the circulator was the actual person that signed it. There's no fraud alleged. They simply state that it was not dated. That is not enough to sustain an objectors petition. And because of that, we, we, we think it should have, it should have been denied, but because of that, we think that the, the, the objectors petition, again, should be denied, denied in its entirety. And that the, the candidate be allowed to remain on the ballot.
And just very in reply, the election code provides that, that the statement be sworn to before some officer authorized to administer oaths. The persons under law that are authorized to administer oaths include the notaries. In order for the oath that they are administering to be a valid oath, it needs to comply with the Notary Act, specifically it needs to comply with six dash 103A, as well as the rest of 103, but six dash 103A specifically for that written oath and affirmation to be valid. Without those factors, it is not valid. And as such, the circulator's affidavit has not been properly notarized in compliance with section 710 of the election code. And the circulator's affidavit is thus, should thus be stricken, thus striking the nominating petitions, and the candidate's name should be ordered not to appear on the ballot. Thank you.
Members of the board, everybody still here?
I am present and listening.
Mayor Rogers, Trustee Hennard, are you still present?
I'm here.
All right.
I'm here, I'm sorry.
Okay, do members of the board have any questions to the attorneys?
So I, I do have one, well, question, and I know that I, I don't even, this may or may not be even relevant because I understand the four corners of the petition. Clerical errors happened, and that's what I'm hearing, is there's a clerical oversight on the document. On this one, there's 43 documents that have the same clerical error that it, it makes it hard for me to feel that it's a clerical error for somebody that does a notary with the date and the stamp. So I guess my question will be to Attorney Samuelson. Is that strained from the format or the policy or what should be looked at, or is there any relevance to that?
Um, I think it's, it's up to the board member to determine what, what weight they give the issue, the fact that the date didn't appear on any of the documents. But I will say that is it failure to adhere to a specific form or, um, issues, failures by the notary to, to, it, it would still be, in, in a lot of ways, considered to just be a clerical error. Um, and in, in looking at the case law, failure to strictly comply with the format by a notary is not comply, required. It, it's been substantial compliance. So the, the, the fact that it's on every page, it's still the same question before the board is to whether or not that date is, uh, must be strictly, whether or not the date is fatal to the petitions. Um, and as both attorneys have stated, the electoral court, the electoral, I'm sorry, the election laws just requires that they be sworn before one authorized to administer an oath. Does that answer your question? Not really.
Somewhat, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's still, it's still, it's still just a, um, the, the question is still the same, is, you know, is that date required?
Okay, and have there been any previous cases where the date of the notary has been missing?
Not that I have found. There have been other previous cases related to errors made by the notary. So, um, there's the case where the notary, two different, I think, two different notaries signed affidavit, the Centric case, there is the Coleman case where, uh, the, then the signature was on the wrong line. There's the, what case? This is the Aiken versus Smith, where they used the wrong form for the, uh, notary. There have not found anything related to the date. So in those cases where you don't have a case that's on point, you look to what the court has said in deciding these cases. I have not found a case where the court has found that an issue with the Notorial Jurat has been, has been a detriment to the petitions. The case law says that the court has generally excused clerical errors in notarial, Notorial Jurats where the affiant is otherwise correctly identified. Uh, that cited by a number of cases, and I think was also cited, um, by Attorney Spence in his brief.
Okay, that answers all my questions.
Any further questions?
Both sides rest?
Okay.
Yes.
Attorney Spence, I'm sorry, I didn't get your response.
Yes, yes.
Madam Jaworski? Okay.
Sorry, yes.
Any more comments from the board members?
Yeah, um, my concern is with all the petitions, which Trusty House just stated, every petition was missing the date. And normally, when you go into any establishment, whether it be a currency change to get a notary, you have to sign a document in front of them and then also get the stamp and signature from the notary. So I never saw documentation without a date on it. Therefore, it makes me believe that it was a pattern, a pattern of fraud because it went out, it went out on the street, probably, maybe she stamped it, and you guys got signatures, and then you guys just forgot to put the date on it. There's just so many unknowns of why all the pages is not dated. Now, I could see if it was a clerical error, and you guys only missed one sheet, but you missed all 40, I think it's 40 sheets, 42, I don't really know. But it's like 40 sheets that don't have a date on it. So that's why I can't support your argument because it just, that's impossible. Normally, when a person runs for office, every, every sheet has a date on it.
Can I respond?
Sure, sure.
The, the, every sheet rests on its own. So it's, it's whether, and, 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 and further, there was no pattern of fraud alleged. So I don't think that the board should consider something that was not alleged in the objectors petition as far as a pattern of, of fraud that was not alleged at any point. And further, as I say, stated, the, each, each one of the, um, the petitions that was notarized rests on its own. So I don't think you can take a group and say that, you know, because one was, was not dated, and the other one was not dated, and the other one was not there, there's must be some, the notary simply did notarize the documents and didn't, and failed to, uh, to date it. So, and, you know, if you take into consideration my, my, the affidavit, which was attached to the, uh, to our motion, you look at the affidavit, you know, the sheet clearly indicates what occurred and when it was dated, and so forth. So, you know, that's my only, only response to, to, to you.
And then if I, if I can reply to that, each petition sheet does not rest on its own, in my opinion. That's why you file a set of nomination papers. If you file a set of petition sheets and fail to number them, that's a fatal objection. You're off the ballot. If you file a set of petition sheets that are completely not uniform as to the heading, the state of, statement of the office, the, you know, just completely not uniform, that's also fatal. These petitions are looked at as a whole. That's why they're considered the nomination paper.
Those are mistakes made by the candidate.
I did not interrupt you, Mr. Tunes.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thanks, thank you. And so each, each petition is not, in my opinion, viewed on its own. You can certainly look at each notary on its own, but I think that the board has every right to take the totality of the circumstances into consideration and take into consideration the fact that an alleged clerical error occurred at least 43 times. The clerical error or a Scrivener's error is usually something that's kind of fleeting. This was either purposeful, purposeful or completely neglectful, one of the two. And in addition, you know, Member Hennard had made some statements that, that she, that this gave, gave her some pause and some concern as it relates to fraud. Attorney Spence had stated that the board cannot consider any allegations of fraud because there was no allegation of fraud presented. I concede that we did not put in a, a fraud objection in the objectors petition because at the time, we knew of no instances of fraud, and we're not going to make frivolous objections. Nonetheless, the board, if during the hearing determines that it has some sort of evidence of fraud, it cannot then turn a blind eye to fraud. So if the board, as, as a body, and, you know, if, if the members determine that they see something to be fraudulent, or they have some concerns about fraud, the board has every right to review that and to rule on that. And there's law to back that up. Thank you.
There, there is no evidence of fraud presented, just for the record.
I, I, I would not make a decision based on being a, or consider my vote based on it being a fraud effort, or intentionally being a fraud effort. It could have been just in fact that they, they failed to, to put the date on it, even though it was notarized. So I just wanted to mention the, the, the fact that, going on record, saying that it may be a fraud, we probably should, should not, should, should not that be in the case. That's, that's all I want to say. I'm not making my vote based upon it actually being a fraudulent act. Attorney Samuelson, you want to comment here before we go forward? Both sides have rested, right?
Okay, um, so as I stated before, um, I've reviewed the case law. I've read the Cintoc case. There's the Aiken versus Smith case. And Brennan versus Coleman. Some of the cases involving issues regarding, um, the, the jurat. And none of, all of those cases find that, uh, clerical error with a jurat doesn't mean, doesn't result in a candidate not being on the ballot. That this isn't a substantive error, is instead a ministerial error. And that the language that is found, I think, in all of these cases is consistently been that courts have generally excused clerical errors in Notorial Jurists where the affiant is identified. Um, so that's the, that is the current case law relating to issues when it comes to notaries that, um, this is a, this is an error that was made by the, um, jurat. This is an error made by the notary. It isn't an error made by the candidate. And the Cintoc case that was cited by Ms. Jaworski, and she read, I don't know if she cited this language in this argument, but courts generally view a jurat, meaning a notary, as merely that part of an affidavit where the officer certifies that it was sworn before him. It is not the affidavit. Rather, the jurat is simply evidence of the fact that the affidavit was properly sworn to by the affiant. Accordingly, where the affiant is otherwise identified, courts overlook more cler, mere clerical errors such as naming the wrong person in the jurat, or even omitting the jurat, omitting from the jurat the affiant's name entirely. So that would mean that if the person in the so-and-so, if they failed to name the person who was swearing before the notary, that that is overlooked as a mere clerical error. So given that background, I just wanted the board to be aware of what the case law says in regards to issues similar to this one, where there is an error regarding the notary. Again, um, I think that what you're, we're looking at is, is an issue made by the notary in this case. And that I, based on what the cases say, this would be seen as a clerical error.
If I'm getting the interpretation correctly, it's a, a minor error that has been viewed, is this case law?
So the, um, there, I did not find a case that relates to whether or not the notary needs to include a date. Um, and I don't know that that was cited by either of the parties, but both parties did cite to the Cintac, Cintoc case. They cited to the Brennan v. Coleman, or one of the parties cited to Brennan v. Coleman. So this is case law related to issues where the, related to Notorial Jurists. So issues related to notaries. Um, and notaries have done all sorts of different things in, in failing to strictly comply, and all of the case law is consistent that, again, courts have generally excused clerical errors in Notorial Jurists where the affiant is otherwise correctly identified.
Okay. Is there any, any, uh, direction there in regards to the expiration of a notary's seal? Or a notary's, uh, term?
I was not looking for a case regarding the expiration of a notary's term, so I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
I don't know if,
I'm sorry.
I cannot say that it does or does not exist.
Okay, but in this case, and I don't have the documents in front of me, the expiration is not an issue.
Correct. The expiration of the notary's term is not an issue. The, the notary's term in this case expires on May 11, 2024.
Okay. Attorney Spence, you want to, any additional?
Chairman, yeah, I just, you know, would, would like to, um, just restate what, what Attorney Samuelson has said with regards to the state of the law in this, in this case. Again, this was not a, an, a, an error by the candidate, which an error by the candidate is, can be sometimes fatal, and, and possibly should be because there, there needs to be strict compliance with regards to what the candidate submits. But with regards to a notary, again, it's been, it's been excused over and over again when the notary makes a mistake as opposed to the candidate. So a notor, a clerical error made by a notary should not be fatal to an individual obtaining access to the ballot.
Okay, Attorney Jaworski?
Just very briefly, um, you know, the, the state law is, is clear in that there is no case law as it relates to the date of the notary. While there is additional case law, while there is case law that deals with other areas of Notorial Acts, I think the Cintac case is clear where it states that there needs to be compliance for a notary to be valid. There needs to be compliance with section six dash 103A. It's very clear, it's, you know, quoted in their, in their decision, that is still good law. And I think that the error, which occurred 43 times, is more than a clerical error. And the candidates have an obligation to review their own petitions before they're filed. They have an obligation to make sure that the documents that they are filed, that they are filing comply with law. They have an obligation to make sure that the documents that they are filed, that they are filing comply with law. Now, if there's a notary that's not a valid notary, but they represent themselves to be a valid notary, that's a different story. That is a mistake in the notary. Where you've got a notary that failed to fully perform the act and a candidate who, in binding their petitions and organizing their petitions, failed to notice that failure. I think that failure should also be imputed on the candidate too. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. If you think this case were to move forward into, uh, a judicial court or to the circuit court and, and actually after hearing the response, um, from our, our board attorney, uh, would it, would it be sustained? And I think it would be probably reviewed what, what our village, not our village, but our board attorney had, uh, mentioned some of the case law that she had read, um, in regards to a disposition of possibly, uh, a case of this, this type.
I can't really speak to what a circuit court would do. There's been cases I've taken up to the circuit court that I expect to win and
We always.
I have to go up to the appellate court to get my win. And then there's been cases that I expected, you know, to, to lose and miraculously won. So, I mean, really and truly, you know, it depends on the judge that you get. It depends on the panel that you get on appeal. There, there's too many variables to actually give.
Yeah, an opinion.
Opinion on that.
I would agree. But I, I, I would say though, to add to, to respond to your question is that I believe that the circuit court will look at the state of the law with regards to notorial acts on, on, on cert-, uh, on petitions. And I think that they would, would indicate that, you know, the state of the law is that the, uh, an error made by a notary on petitions is not fatal if the individual under oath is otherwise identified.
All right, if there's no further, uh,
A minute, maybe one question, I guess maybe for our board attorney. The, um, yeah, I, cause I, I think it, it seems pretty straightforward. Is the date required or not on there? Uh, I will continue to say what's giving me pause is that is the number of times that it's missing. So is that clerical, uh, the word clerical, I mean, I would think is uh, on occasion, or it could be the date here or name there. So that's giving me pause. Um, but that the end question still remains is the date required. Uh, for our board attorney, the question is, um, does this decision need to be made at this time? Is that where we move to next? Or is there time to deliberate? What's the, what, what, what's the next steps?
Um, can I have a, can I have a brief moment to think about that? I want to come back in.
I raised one tough question. Win for me. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Um, can we come back in five minutes? Is that okay? Thanks.
Okay, um, we'll recess for five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's come, matter of fact, let's come back at, uh, three forty-five.
Okay.
Okay, it's three forty-five.
All right. Trustee Hennyard, are you there?
Hey guys, I'm back.
Okay. Um, so to answer, trustee has this question. Yes, we can continue this to another date to allow you to, uh, take some time to think about it. And then, uh, at that next date, we can have a vote on the objectors petition. Uh, if that's what, uh, what the board wants to do, that's allowed.
I was just acquiring next steps. I'm, uh, yeah, I'm still kind of weighing back and forth.
So, so, uh, that would be an option is that we can set this, that we can set this case for another date. Uh, uh, to allow you time to weigh back and forth and, and decide how you want to vote. Um, at that next date, we would then, uh, take a vote on whether or not to, um, sustain or overrule the objections made in the objectors petition.
Well, I, I'll let the other board members kind of weigh in. I was, I was just asking what next steps were.
Okay, yeah.
I'd like to move forward and get this over with. We got a number of the cases, uh, that we have to to go through. We got the holidays we have to deal with and, um, and I, I like to move forward and get it over.
I agree.
Okay, well, I guess I'm gonna make the motion.
Okay, let's see. Madam Clerk, what is the, uh, what are we actually voting on here?
There has yet, uh, been no motion made, but I'll defer to Attorney Samuelson.
So someone needs to make a motion either to sustain the objections made in the objectors petition or to overrule the objections made in the objectors petition.
If a clarification overrule, um, be in favor of, not, favor is not the word I want to use, but would be a vote for, um, overruling the, the objection and
You would.
In fact, go ahead, I'm just for clarification.
Okay, so if you vote, so if you vote to overrule the objections made in the objectors petition, what you're saying is you're basically denying the objections and you're allowing the candidate to stay on the ballot. To sustain the objections made in the objectors petition means that you are agreeing with the finding for the objector and then the candidate is removed from the ballot.
Okay. All right, um, I like a motion to overrule the objection that is pending now. Is there a second? Is there a second? No second?
And either way, we have to vote on it, right?
Exactly.
Um, second.
Okay.
Well, either way, it would have died and then we could have made a new motion. It's how, it's just like the board meeting, but go ahead.
There's, the, the motion on the floor and there's a second. Uh, Madam Clerk?
No further discussion. Chairman Rogers?
I'd like to vote to overrule the objection.
That's an aye. Trustee Hennyard?
No.
And trustee House?
No.
Okay, motion fails. Two ayes and one nay.
No, one aye. Two.
Okay, that's what I mean. Okay, that ends this matter, doesn't it?
I, I think the, if I may, just, just for clarity in the record, I think the board should take an affirmative vote. Uh, the people in the majority take an affirmative vote then to sustain the objection if that is what the board's will is.
Yes.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to sustain the objection.
Second.
Okay, motion on the floor and second on the floor. Roll call.
Chairman Rogers?
No.
Trustee Hennyard?
Aye.
And trustee House?
Aye.
A motion carries.
Okay. So at this point, um, the electoral, so I will prepare a written decision for the electoral board to finalize its decision and serve upon the parties electronically. Um, and if any party is not present, the final executed decision will be emailed to them with a copy sent via certified mail. Then the question is you do need to come back, uh, we do need to come back at another date for you to sign the decision. Um, so we need to pick another date to come back for this particular board. Do we have any suggestions on dates?
Do we have a date up for tomorrow?
Uh, we do not, and I would, because I, I get to draft this, I would prefer a little bit of time to allow me to put together a decision.
Well, Monday's fine.
Monday?
Yeah.
Okay.
Monday's not good for me until after one o'clock.
It don't matter. I'm open. Just not during the holidays is all I was saying. So Monday's fine, anytime for me.
Okay, so sometime on Monday, uh, so Monday, December twenty-eighth in the afternoon.
Okay, what, what time?
Does two o'clock work?
That's good.
Okay. So then, um, just like the other cases, we would then need a motion to recess the board until Monday, December twenty-eighth at two P M.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to recess the board to Monday, December twenty-eighth at two P M.
Okay.
Okay, motion is second. Roll call.
Chairman Rogers?
Aye.
Trustee Hennyard?
Aye.
Trustee House?
Aye.
Motion carries. Three ayes.
Okay. So change of the board um, for the next cases.
Next case is in oh five?
No, it is oh six.
Oh six.
Um, and I think there was some discussion previously about hearing all three of these together. Is that correct from the parties?
That is correct.
I would think.
Yes, please.
So then we would need, uh, we'll, we'll, um, we'll make that motion after the roll call. Uh, that way we can get all three of these done together. So if you have, um, oh six, oh, the documents for oh six, oh eight and oh nine in front of you.
Yeah, are you, are you going to call each case individually? And then when it gets to the part for the argument, just ask the attorneys to stipulate that the argument from case so-and-so be inserted here and then close that case and then.
I think what we're gonna do is, um, uh, ask for a motion to hear the cases contemporaneously. Is that, does that work? Or would you rather just have the, cause then we, we would have to go through the, um, items one through three. I guess that's the question. Do the attorneys have a preference?
Um, when I, when I've done this in the past, I mean, I obviously want, I personally want to make it as easy for the court reporter as possible. I understand that these hearings are obviously very challenging. I understand that these hearings are obviously very challenging. When I've done it in the past, I've kind of just, uh, heard the one case and then adopted the arguments in the other case, and then the court reporter kind of transferred those over.
That's what I'm saying, but you have to call all three cases individually, so,
Yeah.
so that if one goes up on appeal and the other doesn't, you have an individual transcript for each case.
Correct.
We'll kind of start them all out, but then when it gets to the point of the argument, just ask the attorneys to stipulate.
Okay, we'll do it that way, that's what the court reporter, um, makes it easiest for the court reporter, so you don't need cases '08 and '09 in front of you, right now you only need '06. Okay?
When you get to '08 and '09, it's gonna be real fast.
Yeah, let's hope.
And I can talk really fast if you guys want.
Oh, no, no, no.
For the ease of the court reporter.
She's heard my tip, my fans talking, she knows.
Yeah, I'm going back, I'm muted.
Okay, so Mayor Rogers, whenever you're ready, if you could call the next case, which is the Belcher v. Stubbs, 2020, uh, DMOEB '06.
Uh, just give me one second here.
Okay.
And one other thing, Amber, is if you don't want to read that whole thing about the, um, COVID-19 thing,
Yeah.
you could just, um, because this is a new board, have them read it in the '06 case, and then when you get to '08 and '09, just say, "At this point, the court reporter will insert the preamble," or whatever. If, if you want to, instead of reading it every time.
Yeah, I think that, that would be preferred, I was, I was thinking that something, by next week, I should have this memorized.
Yeah.
Me too, okay, ready to go.
Okay.
All right, I'd like to call to order, docket number, uh, 2020, DM zero, I'm sorry, DMOEB dash zero, six. That's, uh, Belcher versus Stubbs. Okay, um, let's reflect, this is initial electoral board hearing, uh, December 22nd, 2020, at 3:57, uh, I'd like to call to order, this electoral board meeting, um, okay. Please be advised that on December 11th, 2020, the governor of the state of Illinois issued his latest statewide disaster proclamation related to continuing public health emergency posed by COVID-19 pandemic, and has further issued executive orders in implementing further enhanced mitigation and measures and restrictions. As such, pursuant to Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act and the Rules of Procedures, and as the chair of this board, I have determined, I have determined that holding a meeting entirely in person, that it is otherwise conducted in full compliance with the Illinois Open Meeting Act is neither practical nor proven because of the ongoing disaster. To the extent necessary, this meeting will be conducted with the option to participate via internet teleconference and without requiring a physical presence of a quorum. I further find that due to the disaster, the physical presence of more than 10 people at the regular meeting location in an accessible, hygienic, and legally compliant manner is not feasible. Alternative, alternative arrangements have been made to allow the public to hear all discussion, testimony, and roll call votes via Zoom teleconference. All votes shall be conducted by roll call vote, and a verbatim record of this meeting shall be made and maintained in accordance with the Open Meetings Act. All participants are hereby further notified that by participating at this meeting, they acknowledge and are informed of this meeting's public recording, thank you. Now, the introduction of the municipal electoral board, I am Riley Rogers, the chairperson of the electoral board, also serving on the electoral board is village clerk Mary Kay Dugan and senior trustee Tiffany Hennard. These members are provided by the Illinois Election Code, which mandates our service to hear and pass upon objections filed against candidates' nomination papers. Well, I clerk, uh, I, I'd like to, uh, for the clerk to establish or place a call or roll.
Chair Rogers?
I'm here.
Clerk Dugan here, trustee Hennard?
Present.
Okay, a quorum has been established, attorney, uh, Samuelson.
Hi, Amber Samuelson, on behalf of the electoral board, and could the attorneys for the parties please identify themselves?
Good afternoon, for the record, Keith Spence on behalf of the candidate.
And Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
I'd like to get a motion to adopt the rules of procedures represented.
Um, we don't, again, uh, those, those have already been adopted, so the next issue would be public comments. Are there any public comments related to this hearing in 2020, DMOEB '06? Uh, no, there are no public comments related to this case. Um, and, at this time, I'd like to give a recap of the case status and filings. Is, uh, that okay, uh, chairperson Rogers?
It is, go ahead.
Okay. The initial hearing in this case was held on December 15th, 2020, and a case management order was issued subsequent thereto. Um, the candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December 18th, 2020. The objector filed a response to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on December 21st, 2020.
Okay, um, why don't we proceed then?
Proceeding on candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on objector's verified petitions, um, since this is the candidate's motion, the candidate would have the opportunity to argue first.
Thank you, uh, just for procedural purposes, the mo, the, the arguments we make for this motion, on, on this motion will be applied to the other, uh, cases, trustee cases. I'm saying so we won't have to belabor the point.
Duplicated, huh?
Yes.
Okay, for clarification of, uh, duplication, I should say, okay.
I'm fine with that. Okay.
Yeah.
If, if I can make a suggestion, um, the, the clerk was, was here for the entire argument for the prior case, and the clerk heard the entire argument for the prior case. Well, technically, you know, of course, we all want to make our, our record in each case individually, could we adopt the arguments in the prior case to this case, even though there, I mean, I understand the prior case is a clerk's case, and this case is the trustee's case, but since the clerk was present, um, Ms. Mary Kay Dugan, since she was present for the entire argument, maybe just for sake of, you know, judicial economy, we've all been here since noon. So I just was trying to think of a way to, to speed this up for everybody, just thought my...
And the board is, um, exactly the same.
Well, it's, it's different, because the clerk is on here.
So I think because, because it's a different board, you have to make the arguments again.
That's fine.
Okay.
I apologize.
You just adopt them, since she was here.
And, and the clerk might have different questions as well.
That's fine, that's great.
So...
Okay, well, thank you, I'll take four, so the issue, uh, again, um...
Attorney Spence, before you go forward,
Yes.
excuse me for the interruption, but in, 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 um, in light of what attorney Jaworski said, um, this same argument that you're putting on now for this particular candidate to try to speed up this process, is possibly gonna be close to the same argument you're gonna have for the other two candidates, correct?
Correct, yes.
So can we stipulate to that, what's going for it, uh, the presentation?
We will stipu, we will stipulate, we, we, uh, because we have a court reporter, and the court reporter is creating a transcript. The court reporter indicated that what will be easiest for her in creating this transcript is that we, we go through the, the initial steps of calling the case, uh, roll call, um, and then a, uh, statement of documents filed, and then at the point for argument, we, the parties will just adopt their previous argument, and that will be placed in the transcript.
Okay.
Uh, but because this is a different board than the board that, uh, the previous board, um, for the clerk case, uh, we do need to have argument on these motions. It's just the cases after this, we can adopt the argument that is about to be made right now.
That's fine. Okay. Uh, attorney Spence, you want?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, again, the respondent in this case, I'm sorry, one second. All right, this respondent in this, in this case has filed a petition seeking the office of candidate for the office of trustee of the village of Dalton, which will be voted upon on, at the February 23rd, 2021 consolidated primary election. The respondent has submitted 43 pages of nominating petitions with significantly more than the 25 necessary valid signatures required. The petitioner objector has filed an objection to the nominating petitions based on allegations that the petitions are invalid because the notary is not dated on the circulator's affidavit. We believe that the petitioner's objection fail as a matter of law. The issue raised is that the notarial signature is not dated, but amidst by the absence of an objection, that the circulator appeared before the notary as no allegation of fraud is alleged. The certification of petition sheet merely requires that the document was signed and sworn to before an officer authorized to administer oaths in Illinois. It is undisputed that the candidate signed the circulator statement in the presence of the notary, and a stamp and signature of the notary public was placed upon the document indicating her jurisdiction and authorization to do so. The objector simply states that the notary signature is not dated. There are mandatory and directory requirements under Section 710 of the Election Code. And to the extent that the Section 710 of the Election Code is a mandatory, rather than directory statute, the Illinois Supreme Court has acknowledged time and time again that substantial compliance can satisfy mandatory statutory requirements governing statements of candidates. The court has also applied the doctrine of substantial compliance to mandatory provisions of the Election Code. Our courts have repeatedly recognized that substantial, rather than strict compliance, is the proper standard by which to evaluate deviations from certain mandatory provisions of the Election Code. The Illinois appellate court has generally excused clerical errors in notarial jurats where the affiant is otherwise correctly identified. That is the case of Brennan v. Coleman, 3535, ILAB 3rd, 716. The provision of the Election Code, the provisions of the Election Code are designed to protect the integrity of the electoral process, and that access to a place on the ballot is a substantial right, not likely to be denied. The essential act required under the code, the Garcia's, uh, circulator affidavits, is that personal appearance of the circulator before a notary. The fact that, uh, the date on the notarization is missing does not impugn the integrity of the oath-taking process. The circulators appeared before a notary public and stated under oath that they were the individual that circulated the petitions in question. Sessions 7-10 and the analogous 10-4 do not say the nomination papers should be notarized at all, but rather say that the circulator must swear an oath in front of a person authorized to administer oaths. The language of Section 10 does not prescribe conduct which must be followed by the notary, but is merely a statement regarding the scope of a notary's authority to administer oaths. In the instant case, the circulator did in fact take an oath before a person who they believe was au, was authorized to administer oaths, supplying all the information required by the statute. Thus, it is clear that the circulators believe that they could be subjected to perjury prosecutions if the statements they made prove to be false. The objector has not alleged evidence of fraud or corruption on the part of either the circulator or the notary, simply that the notary was not dated. And we believe that the candidate has met a substantial compliance with, with both the Election Code and any other statute governing the notary of documents in the state of Illinois.
Okay. Um, and, um, the Section 710 of the Illinois Election Code, as it relates to the circulator's affidavit, requires that the circulator's affidavit contains su, and I'm quoting from the statute here, "contains such statement shall be sworn to by fo," I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Let me try, yeah. "Such statement shall be sworn to before some officer authorized to administer oaths in this state." Under Section 2 of the Oaths and Affirmations Act, those persons that can administer oaths are timed and delineated. One of those groups is notaries public. Public notaries need to then comply with the Illinois Public Notary Act. Section 6-103 of the Illinois Public Notary Act requires certain things occur in order to validate a notary, or to, to validate the jurat, the actual notorial act. Specifically, Section 6-103A states that the notorial act, um, must be evidenced by a certificate signed and dated by the notary public. Again, it states both signed and dated by the notary public. The candidate's in, in his motion to strike and dismiss discusses, uh, the Sintoc case, as well as other cases, for the proposition that minor defects in a notary, minor clerical errors, should not doom the notary or invalidate the notary. However, the minor defects that have been reviewed of those, none of them deal with a failure to sign or failure to date. Here we've got a failure to date, they did not date the notary. Said, uh, Sintoc ca, the Sintoc case specifically found at page 974, that the statute, speaking of the Notary Act, the Notary Public Act, the statute accords with custom, courts generally view a jurat as merely part of an affidavit where the officer certifies that it was sworn to before him. It is not the affidavit, rather, the jurat is simply evidence of the fact that the affidavit was properly sworn to by the affiant. Again, evidence that it was properly sworn to by the affi, affiant. The quote then goes, uh, the court then goes on to state that according, accordingly, where an affiant is otherwise identified, courts overlook mere clerical errors, such as naming the wrong person in the jurat, or even omitting from the jurat the affiant's name entirely. Now, the court then goes on to state that the jurat met the statutory requirements of 6-103 of the Illinois Public Notary Act. The jurat contained the information requiring subsection, or required by subsection A, and sufficiently showed that the circulator sworn oath before a notary meeting the requirements of subsection B2 or B3. This is very instructive, the court's discussion about this, specifically the Sintoc court's discussion, is extremely instructive. They looked at what happened in the Sintoc case, which was, again, the notary in that case affixed their name to the, to the bottom of the petition, to the circulator's affidavit, to the jurat, and the circulator's affidavit affixed their name to it twice. Once where they were supposed to sign, and once where the circulator was supposed to put their name. So the court found that, okay, they, they signed it twice, really, no harm, no, no foul, that the, the substantive provisions that we need are in here, we can tell what happened. In this case, we can't tell what happened, we can't tell what date upon which the notary affixed the stamp. We can't tell the date upon which the notary signed it, we can't tell the date upon which the, the candidates or the circulators appeared before the notary. That's simply missing. And to state that the notaries, uh, I'm sorry, that the circulators knew that they were sub... knew that they were subjecting themselves to perjury and, and stuff like that, I don't think that the, the board can even take that into consideration because number one, we can't put ourselves in the mind of the circulators. Number two, we have no evidence to that effect. So I'd just like to, you know, again, point out that this case law where it states that the statutory requirements of section six-dash-one-oh-three were met in that case, that was the differentiation. There is no case law that is on point as it relates to the missing date. There's just simply none there. So this is definitely a case to, case of first impression. Um, the board can certainly look to how the courts had analyzed this in the past and I encourage the board to look at how the court analyzed the issue in Sintoc. And one of the bases for their analyst error, for their determination was the court reasoning that the jurat met the statutory requirements of six-dash-one-oh-three A. In this case, we don't have those statutory requirements being met. We have them being completely ignored and in fact, completely ignored for forty-three pages. This is more than a mere clerical error. This did not occur on one affidavit. This did not occur on solely the statement of candidacy. This occurred on the document that states that I, the circulator, did everything in accordance with law. We should be able as, as the general public to determine when that notary signed that, that, that jurat and when that circulator swore to that before that notary. And we can't make any allegations of fraud at this point because we're not going to make any bad faith allegations because we are unable to investigate whether there was fraud because we have absolutely no idea when these petitions were notarized. And that's one of the reasons why the data is so important. Thank you.
Again, the, the election code is very clear as to what is required as far as the notary. The candidate, the circulator, must appear before the notary and swear under oath that they were the circulator of those petitions. That's what required. It does not require a when, but a who and a what. That's what i- it does indicate. They just want to know that this circulator appeared before a notary. What did they do? They swore on an oath, under oath, that they were the ones that circulated these petitions. There are two questions of law. One, is there a requirement for a date? Or that the, the, uh, that a notary stamp even appear on the circulator's affidavit? There's no requirement specified in the election code. So the first question is, is there a requirement that a date appear on the notary's jurat? We s- suggest no, because there's, the, the case law is, 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 the election code, code is silent as to it. Had there been a requirement, we believe that they would have, would have, would have done so. The second issue is, if there is no date, is the failure to place a date on there fatal? And we certainly do not believe that. Everything else in the, in that circulator's affidavit, uh, that the notary notarized, um, was substantially complied with. You know, there was, there was, there's no, uh, indication that, or allegation that the, um, that the, the, uh, circulator was not the person who circulated the document that the, the notary or someone else committed fraud. There is no allegation as to that. So the notary, her, her, her statement, her signature and her stamp is sufficient and is in substantial compliance with the election code. We don't need to go outside of the election code to try to define what the election co- code intended. So we believe that, um, the, 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 the circulator's affidavit, the notary affixed thereto is in substantial compliance and, and the, the, um, the objector's objection should be denied.
Okay. Cross, uh, Mr. Worsky? Or you get, uh, you want to respond to that, Mr. Worsky?
Uh, I mean, it's, if I respond, then candidate gets a response. I'll, I'll just try and keep it extremely brief. Uh, just, I don't believe that this meets with the, the principles of substantial compliance. Substantial compliance requires some showing of compliance, not complete, completely ignoring the requirements of the law. And I think that in, in my opinion, because the Illinois election code says that the circulator's affidavit needs to be signed and sworn to before somebody that's authorized to administer oaths. The person that's authorized to administer oaths also has to make sure that that signing and swearing is in compliance with law. And they failed, the candidate failed, the circulator failed. Everybody failed to make sure that this was complying with law. This is beyond a mere clerical error, especially since it occurred for forty-three pages. So I think that if it had occurred on one or two pages, maybe even ten pages, it'd be substantial compliance. The fact that it occurred on every single petition sheet, I think changes things. This is not a, a minor deviation. This is a major deviation. Thank you.
And there's no requirement that a date be affixed thereto and there was substantial compliance. And the objector, I'm, I'm sorry, the candidate appeared before the notary, signed the, the, the notar- the affidavit, circulator's affidavit. It was properly notarized and therefore they are valid.
Okay. Both sides rest.
Candidate rests.
Okay, uh, Ms. Samuelson?
Um, are there any questions from the board members?
I have no questions. Anyone else?
I have no questions.
Um, basically my, um, response is the same as the following case. Thank you.
Well, if, if I may, Trustee Henry, since the, since the cases are different cases, um, with different boards, you may want to put your statements on the record.
Okay, well.
And, and you mean, you mean the following case? You mean the previous case?
The pre- well, yes. I stand corrected. The previous case that we just had. Um, basically, I didn't see or understand why a person didn't get uh, a date on their petition. Normally, when you run for office, uh, you have to complete the entire petition. That's why we hire attorneys to go over our petitions before we turn, turn them in so that we don't end up here in a court, uh, for removal. When you normally go to get innotarized, and I've been several times to a currency exchange, uh, they ask you for your ID, you have to sign in front of them and the person before you normally stamps it, signs it and dates it. So as I stated prior to, um, I didn't understand how a person missed forty-three pages of, of dating after they signed and notarized. Normally, it's like a flow. I've said before, many notaries, and normally they stamp, sign, date, stamp, sign, date. And when you did so, and I guess I won't mention the fraud here again, but I felt that it was fraudulent, uh, because I felt that either A, they got petition signed and, and, um, notarized by a notary and then they went and circulated them because to me, it confused the voter. I, I don't know when a person, uh, circulated the petitions because there's no date on it. I don't know if you guys started that before. It was time to actually go out and circulate. In all good, you could have circulated in June for all I know. So I just think that it should have a date on it. As I stated before, I still stand with the same, um, decision. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Everything's on the record. Uh, both sides rested. Attorney Samuel, do you want to comment here?
So what you're hearing right now is, uh, similar to the other case. Um, so first we do the motion to strike and dismiss. Uh, depending on the results of the motion to make, the strike and dismiss, we'll then hear the, um, the, we could possibly then hear the, uh, hearing on the objector's petition. I know it, it's, it's going to, uh, the, the arguments are very similar, but just a point of clarification, what we're hearing right now is, uh, argument on the motion to strike and dismiss. Um, the, the, um, law on this case, the courts have generally excused clerical errors in notarial juris where the affiant is identified. Um, there, there are several cases where there is an issue with the, um, the notary, some sort of error. And generally, the, um, the case law states that that is a clerical error and it isn't a substantive error. It is a ministerial error. Um, so that being said, um, you, you understand the question that is before you, but the issue right now is whether or not the, um, underlying objector's petition should be dismissed and/or stricken. But so, uh, assuming there's no further discussion, uh, the next step would be for somebody to make a motion on the, uh, motion to strike and dismiss.
I'd like to make a motion to strike and dismiss the objections that are presented to the board. Is there a second?
Um, Mayor, defer again to the attorney, but I believe this is a motion to either, uh, deny or sustain Mr. Spence's motion to strike and dismiss.
Uh, yeah, it is either, uh, to, to grant the motion or to deny the motion to strike or dismiss. So, um, you can either make a motion to grant it or a motion to deny it.
But is there a second? We need a second.
Well, so. Need to clarify the motion, Mayor.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry.
You need to clarify the motion. Um, there is, Mr. Spence filed a motion to strike and dismiss. And as, um, Ms. Samuelson just said, uh, the motion is here to, uh, grant his motion to strike and dismiss or deny his motion to strike and dismiss.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to grant and/or deny the motion to dispense.
No, you have to choose one. You, you granting it or you denying it? You may make the motion.
Hey, hey, go ahead, make the motion.
I want to make a motion to deny.
Second.
That wasn't the mayor's motion, but, you know, that, that wasn't the motion on the
He can't do both.
I said, and, I said, and/or. I didn't say both. I said,
You were asking for someone to make a motion.
Yes.
Trustee Henry just made the motion and I just seconded it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Attorney Henry, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now it's a roll call.
Go ahead.
And the motion to deny, the motion to strike and dismiss. I got it right? I'm getting confused too. Trust, uh, Chair Rogers?
Aye.
Clerk Dugan?
Aye.
Trustee Henry?
Aye.
Motion favor three ayes.
Wrong getting flinching.
So then, uh, next on the docket would be, we would move on to a hearing on the objector's underlying, uh, petition. So at this point, the objector would make their argument and the objector would have the burden of proof, um, as to their petition. So, and I apologize that if things are getting repetitive, hang in there.
Definitely. I, I do feel like a bit of a broken record today, I must say. I wish I would have just audiod my argument and just hit everybody over the head. But that said, I will not belabor the point too much. I think that, uh, I will primarily adopt the arguments that I just made in my response to the motion to strike and dismiss. Um, and I guess just, you know, for a point of clarification, while the Illinois election code does not specifically state that the notary in this instance needs to be dated, it does again state that it needs to be such statement shall be sworn to before some officer authorized to administer oaths in the state. So for the swearing to be valid and for the officer to be validly exercising their authority that was given to them by the state to administer oaths, they need to exercise it properly. Properly exercising that includes compliance with section six-dash-one-oh-three of the Illinois Notary Public Act. All that said, the, um, the Illinois Notary Public Act clearly states that a date is required. There isn't, there's no case that has been presented, there is no case law that has been presented to provide that the, um, that, that the notary can just not put the date on. There's cases that have been presented to state that, you know, if they put the names in the wrong place, that's probably fine. If they, if, if the notary doesn't even state the name of the, of the affiant in the jurat at the bottom of an affidavit where the top of the affidavit states the name of the notary, you know, that's fine too. But there are, there are no cases on record that I could find that deal with a date being missing. I submit that that's because most notaries are pretty, uh, pretty tight when they perform their job. They try to make sure all the information is there. And if they make a minor deviation, it's usually one or two petition sheets, not forty-three petition sheets. Um, the notary didn't do their job. The candidates should have looked at the petitions more carefully before they filed them and the candidate should have done their job. And because of all this, the notary, in my opinion, is invalid because the notary did not comply with section six-dash-one-oh-three of the act. You can't go to a currency exchange and, and not present a notarized document to, you know, to, to get some business done. You can't go and file a deed, a notarized deed without the date on it. All of those legal filings would be rejected. So as such, why should you be able to not date your petitions when the law requires that they be signed and sworn to under oath in front of somebody authorized to administer oaths? And that person authorizing an administer oaths must comply with an act that has certain requirements in it, such as dating the act, the, the notarial act. So again, I'm adopting the arguments previously made and, you know, perfecting them, if you will, by giving these additional arguments. Um, and I reserve some time for reply. Thank you.
Oh. Yes, I too adopt my prior arguments. I, I think the, the appellate court and the Supreme Court is very clear as to what is fatal with regards to, um, deviations from, um, mandatory provisions of the election code. Uh, this is not even a mandatory provision of the election code that the, uh, notary be dated. Deeds and other items are, 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 are dated for, for, for reasons. This simply, this, this af- the circulator's affidavit is simply an affidavit that the circulator appeared before a notary and swore that these are the signatures. It, the candidate did not fail to, to, to do anything. This is the notary that did not apply a, a date that's not even mandatory. Even if it was mandatory, again, case law is clear that substantial compliance rather than strict compliance is the proper standard by which to evaluate deviations from certain mandatory provisions of the election code. This was a, a notarial era on, or, or if you want to call it an era, or an oversight by the notary, that is not fatal as to the entire affidavit. It was a substantial compliance. Therefore, we believe, as I argued earlier, that the candidate's name should be placed upon uh, the ballot as he has presented all the required, um, uh, documents and signatures to be placed on it. And again, we must remember that it is important that the essential, uh, uh, reason that we, 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 we do this is that the candidate get the proper signatures from citizens in that community to be placed upon the ballot. The lack of a date on the notarial jurat is not fatal and sh- and should not, and is not, and therefore, the candidate's name should be placed upon the ballot.
Pardon me. Um, just very quickly in reply to that, the, the, the candidates did fail to do something. They failed to make sure that their petitions were in order. They failed to make sure that every line in their petitions that needed to be filled out was filled out. The, the buck does stop with the candidates, not with the notary. The notary was doing an act that they were hired to, to do, but sure, they didn't do it correctly, but the candidate should have noticed that. The candidate should have noticed that there's a place in the petitions that say date and that was just not filled out. Uh, in addition to that, as it relates to substantial compliance, sure, the courts have definitely recognized substantial compliance and, and heavily favor ballot access. However, the courts have not recognized substantial compliance in this type of situation and i- as it relates to defects in the notary of this nature. This, in my opinion, is not a minor defect in the notary. This is a major defect in the notary. And it's a major defect that permeated itself throughout the entire set of nominating petitions. Again, if it was ten sheets of the forty-three, even twenty sheets of the forty-three, I think we could argue, you know, I think substantial compliance would possibly carry the debt. But the fact that it's on all forty-three sheets and all forty-three sheets fail to have that it's on all forty-three sheets and all forty-three sheets have the notary dating the date on which the notarial act occurred is in violation of the Illinois Public Notary Act thereby invalidating the affidavit itself. This is not a minor deviation. This is not a minor clerical error. This is major. And as such, I ask for a finding in our favor and for the candidate's name to be removed from the ballot. Thank you.
Okay. Attorney Samuelson.
So as I, as I stated before, there are a number of cases involving errors made in the, by the jurat, by the notary. And those cases have been discussed by both of the parties. And the language has stated that this court has generally excused clerical errors and notarial juris for the affiant is otherwise correctly identified. And in the centric, centup case, the court stated that accordingly, where an affiant is otherwise identified, courts overlook mere clerical errors such as naming the wrong person in the jurat or even omitting from the jurat the affiant's name entirely. The cases that were cited by both parties where there was an error made, they both found that the individuals stayed on the ballot. Um, and so it's not a substantive, huh, substantial error if it is a ministerial error. So if it is a clerical error to, then it it isn't sufficient to keep a candidate from the ballot.
Is there any further? Or we want to get a motion to go forward and vote on this?
Yes. The question would be, are there any questions from the board members?
No, I'm I'm fine.
Um, I just got one statement which I made earlier. Um, I I do agree that the petition that they submitted is invalid because they're not completed. It's an incomplete document which caused them to not be eligible to run for office. Uh, that that was it. Thanks.
Okay. Did we get a motion to deny? Correct me now, I hear from wrong, uh, Attorney Samuelson, uh, on the motion to deny the objections that have been presented?
Substained or overrule?
Yeah, overrule. But deny works as well. Um.
Okay, um, can I get a motion to overrule the objections that that were presented?
I'd like to make a motion to sustain the objections.
I think that's one motion at a time, right?
Yeah.
I could, I could choose whichever one I want to make.
Well, no one made the first. Again, I think the chair asked for a motion to overrule, but before anyone could make it or second it, Trusty Henry made her motion to sustain.
Correct.
So.
Okay, what was the motion on the floor again?
To sustain the objection.
Okay. Uh, was there a second? Hello? Was there a second? I missed it.
There's no second.
Okay, I'd like to make a second. I'd like to second it.
Well, well, I I I, I I think, you know, if I may add here, because I think that Chairman Rogers first made a motion to overrule the objections.
True.
Then the board member Henry made a motion to sustain the objections.
No, he did not.
Hold on, hold on, trustee. Hang on. Let him clarify.
Neither motion was seconded.
Okay, so.
First of all, I was voting.
Hang on a minute. Okay.
If I may, um, it's it's my understanding the mayor asked for a motion to overrule the objections.
Correct.
Before anyone could make that motion, Trusty Henry made a motion to sustain, sustain the objections.
Correct.
When you asked for a second, at that point, no one had made a second to that motion. Uh, so if you seconded that motion, then there would be a vote on it. If there's no second, then I I would assume at that point the motion fails and then you can make a a a different motion.
The mayor just seconded.
Mayor just seconded it. So but but my understanding was there was a request for a motion to overrule the objection, but that that wrote that nobody had made that motion. So right now, I think on the floor is a motion to sustain the objections. Is that correct, Clerk Dugan?
That's my understanding. So there's a motion and a second now to sustain the objection. Any further discussion?
What's your second? I'm sorry.
I thought you seconded it, Mayor.
Oh, God.
Shall we start over?
I think to be clear, we should, because I think there's some some uh, some unreadiness with regards to the motion that was presented.
Okay. So how do we?
It don't matter. It it, um, let me make clarity from my point. I don't, I don't care if you guys motion to sustain or object, we gonna do both, like we did on the previous case. So if that makes you feel better and y'all want to go with the overrule, go ahead. So I'll take mine off the floor since the mayor don't remember. He just seconded it. He can, we can go with the overrule and then start back with the sustain. So either way, both of them gonna get a vote today.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor now?
There is if you have seconded or did second the motion to sustain the objection.
Okay.
Grant the objection.
All right. Any discussion on that?
If you did second it, Mayor.
Okay, I seconded.
Okay. So the motion is to grant the objection.
Yes, that's the motion. Take the roll.
Chair Rogers?
No.
Clerk Dugan? No. Trusty Henry?
Aye.
Two ayes, one no. I'm sorry.
No, two noes and one aye.
One aye.
Who's on first? Okay.
What's on second?
Two noes, one aye. Okay, so then, since I was present for the previous hearings for the other candidates on this issue, I think the next step is for me to defer to the attorney Samuelson.
Um, I I think in both, uh, do we want to, um, to make it clear for record, a motion to overrule the objections made in the objectors petition? I mean, it's sort of superfluous, but just to have that clarity.
We need to for the other, we're gonna do the same, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So is there a motion? I'm sorry. Your motion to overrule the objection.
Uh, go ahead, Mayor. That's the one you guys want, so.
I'll move.
What was that?
I'll, I will move to overrule the objection.
Okay, second.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to overrule the objection. It's been motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
Chair Rogers?
Yes.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trusty Henry?
No.
Okay, so this time we have two ayes. And one no.
Hi. Um. So, uh, since the, the board has overruled the objections made in the objectors petition, I will prepare a decision for the electoral board to finalize its decision and serve it upon the parties electronically. If any party is not present, the final executed decision will be emailed to them and through the copy sent via certified mail. So this means of like, with the previous case, we need to pick a date to come back to, um, have the board sign the objection. What I'll do is I'll send everybody a signature sheet. You'll sign it and then you'll have to hold it up in front of the camera to show you signed it. Uh, welcome to twenty twenty. So that being said, um, do we want to stick with the same date that we had in the Parker case, even though it's a different board? Or do we want to set this for a different date? Um, I know this board is also coming back on the twenty ninth at two, or we can stick with, um, the twenty eighth at two for signature of the decision? Any preference?
Sure, I'm flexible. Monday's good with me, two thirty.
Okay. I would almost just keeping it at two o'clock, so that way we don't have the issue where we have hearing on one and then we have to pause then, so that way we can go one after another.
Okay.
If that's okay.
I'm good with that.
Is that okay with the the parties as well?
Yes.
Yes.
All right.
We.
Uh, can we waive our appearance?
Right, yeah, we don't need to be.
Uh, do you want to go on the record saying you'll waive your appearance, um, for the next date?
Yes.
With regards to these. But, sorry, I don't mean to talk at the same time. I may jump on, but I likely will not, so I'd like to waive my appearance.
Okay, yes, you can do that. Um, all right, so then we um, can, without, we can then move straight to the next case, is my understanding, because it's the same board. Then we'll recess all these cases to the same date. So if, um, like, so, so if the mayor can recall, or, the head, the mayor can call the next case, which is Belcher versus Wolf, twenty twenty, DMO E B O eight.
I need five minutes.
All right.
Do we need to recess this one?
Oh, I guess my thought is that since it's the same board, we can just recess all of them at the end to a date.
Okay.
And it looks like that date will be December twenty eighth, twenty twenty at two P M. All right, a five-minute break, so come back at four fifty-two.
Okay.
Forty-five, let's make it four fifty-five. It's easier to remember.
All right, great.
So are you asking for a motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss?
Okay.
So it's by agreement by counsel and the board. An agreement has been made to insert the argument related to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition, uh, that they want to insert the argument made in 2020 DM OEB 06, um, because the issues are the same and the board is the same. Um, can I get a, um, agreement from both parties on the record?
Agreed and so stipulated.
Stipulated and agreed, yes.
Okay. Um, any comments regarding, any comment from the, uh, strike that? Um, I guess at this time, uh, I would ask that someone make a motion related to the objectors motion to strike and dismiss.
Okay.
Um, so it's by agreement by counsel and the board. An agreement has been made to insert the argument related to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition, uh, that they want to insert the argument made in 2020 DM OEB 06, um, because the issues are the same and the board is the same. Um, can I get a, um, agreement from both parties on the record?
Agreed and so stipulated.
Stipulated and agreed, yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Okay. Motion to deny.
Board. Motion to deny.
Chair Rogers.
Hi, here.
Clerk Dugan here. Trustee Hennard.
President.
And the attorneys could identify themselves for the record.
For the record, Keith Spence on behalf of the candidate.
Sorry, for some reason I was muted. Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
Okay. Um, there's no public comment, uh, for this case. I should give it a second. I realized that we're sort of the, all the comments seem to be on a delay. Um, but I don't see any public comment. So a recap of case status and filings. Um, initial hearing was held on December 15, 2020, and case management order was issued subsequent thereto. The candidate filed a motion to dis- and to strike and dismiss on December 18, 2020. The objector filed a response to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on December 21st, 2020. Um, at this point, um, we would move to preliminary motions, and that would be the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition.
So, what's next?
Um, Ms. Court Reporter, can we go off the record for a second? Okay, so Ms. Court Reporter, at this point, if the attorneys want to just adopt the arguments made in the, uh, previous case, how would they go about doing so? Uh, Ms. Court Reporter, you're on mute.
Um, so, basically, I think you should just make a comment that by agreement of both counsel and the board, an agreement has been reached to just insert the argument from case DM OB 06 into this case, because it would be the same, and just make sure they stipulate to it on the record, and then I will just take that argument from 06 and, and put it in, and then you can probably just go right to, um, your decision, or, you know, they can deliberate on. I mean, I don't, maybe you even wanted to put that if the, if a election, or if a vote was held, the results would be the same as in.
That sounds nice.
Case 06.
I don't know that we can, can we, that we can transfer over the vote. I think only the argument. Uh, Attorney Jaworski.
Yeah, I, I think you still gotta take a separate vote. I think we still, the, the vote, but I think that we can adopt the argument.
Okay.
Or you can adopt the argument, and Attorney Spence and I can both agree to the adoption of said argument on the.
So then, I don't know, will you have to, um, for the motion to dismiss and strike, then take your vote there, and then make another, then, at this point, the argument as far as the objection is concerned, will be inserted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that is correct. So if we could go back on the record.
Okay.
Um, so it's by agreement by counsel and the board. An agreement has been made to insert the argument related to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition, uh, that they want to insert the argument made in 2020 DM OEB 06, um, because the issues are the same and the board is the same. Um, can I get a, um, agreement from both parties on the record?
Agreed and so stipulated.
Stipulated and agreed, yes.
Okay. Um, any comments regarding, any comment from the, uh, strike that? Um, I guess at this time, uh, I would ask that someone make a motion related to the objectors motion to strike and dismiss.
Okay. 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 Okay.
So I blame this on the previous board for voting to move forward. Hmm? I blame this on the previous board voting to move forward.
Yeah.
All of us.
Well, these next years should go very quickly, because, uh, we'll be able to just, we'll go through the opening, and then just adopt the arguments made, and, um, take a vote on the motion, uh, vote on the petition. Come here, no.
I don't know where they can go.
So that's a no.
Oh, that's. Okay, I'd like to, um, call back to order the, um, what case is that? We're on 08, 09?
We're on 08.
08. Okay, call back to order the, um, document number, Belcher versus, uh, Wolf?
Yes.
2020 DM OEB dash 08. Okay. 37, we said.
Um, if we could have the, um, at this point, the court reporter, um, insert the statement of and findings of in-person meeting unfeasibility due to COVID-19, um, as well as the introduction of municipal officers and electoral board, if that's possible, insert that at this point. Um, so then I would ask that the, um, clerks do roll call of the board.
Okay. Chair Rogers?
Hi, here.
Clerk Dugan here. Trustee Hennard.
President.
And the attorneys could identify themselves for the record.
For the record, Keith Spence on behalf of the candidate.
Sorry, for some reason I was muted. Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
Okay. Um, there's no public comment, uh, for this case. I should give it a second. I realized that we're sort of the, all the comments seem to be on a delay. Um, but I don't see any public comment. So a recap of case status and filings. Um, initial hearing was held on December 15, 2020, and case management order was issued subsequent thereto. The candidate filed a motion to dis- and to strike and dismiss on December 18, 2020. The objector filed a response to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on December 21st, 2020. Um, at this point, um, we would move to preliminary motions, and that would be the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition.
So, what's next?
Um, Ms. Court Reporter, can we go off the record for a second? Okay, so Ms. Court Reporter, at this point, if the attorneys want to just adopt the arguments made in the, uh, previous case, how would they go about doing so? Uh, Ms. Court Reporter, you're on mute.
Um, so, basically, I think you should just make a comment that by agreement of both counsel and the board, an agreement has been reached to just insert the argument from case DM OB 06 into this case, because it would be the same, and just make sure they stipulate to it on the record, and then I will just take that argument from 06 and, and put it in, and then you can probably just go right to, um, your decision, or, you know, they can deliberate on. I mean, I don't, maybe you even wanted to put that if the, if a election, or if a vote was held, the results would be the same as in.
That sounds nice.
Case 06.
I don't know that we can, can we, that we can transfer over the vote. I think only the argument. Uh, Attorney Jaworski.
Yeah, I, I think you still gotta take a separate vote. I think we still, the, the vote, but I think that we can adopt the argument.
Okay.
Or you can adopt the argument, and Attorney Spence and I can both agree to the adoption of said argument on the.
So then, I don't know, will you have to, um, for the motion to dismiss and strike, then take your vote there, and then make another, then, at this point, the argument as far as the objection is concerned, will be inserted?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, that is correct. So if we could go back on the record.
Okay.
Um, so it's by agreement by counsel and the board. An agreement has been made to insert the argument related to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss objectors verified petition, uh, that they want to insert the argument made in 2020 DM OEB 06, um, because the issues are the same and the board is the same. Um, can I get a, um, agreement from both parties on the record?
Agreed and so stipulated.
Okay.
Any comments regarding, any comment from the, uh, strike that?
Um, I guess at this time, uh, I would ask that someone make a motion related to the objectors motion to strike and dismiss.
Okay, I'm gonna try this again. Like a, to make a motion to strike the motion to dispense.
Closer.
So are you asking for a motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss?
Yes.
No, I don't think that's what you said, but.
Well, you know, it's, but, I thought it was clear. I'd like to make a motion to strike the objection.
There we go.
The objection is submitted, if, if you will, and then, and then, um.
No, Mayor, it's this, there is a motion to strike and dismiss the objection. So, is.
That, that's what I said last time, but you said it wasn't right. So you, why don't somebody else make the motion?
I'm afraid to now, myself. Um, motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Okay. Motion to deny.
Yeah.
Motion to deny.
Board.
Chair Rogers, motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
Yes.
No, I don't think that's what you said, but.
Well, you know, it's, but, I thought it was clear. I'd like to make a motion to strike the objection.
There we go.
The objection is submitted, if, if you will, and then, and then, um.
No, Mayor, it's this, there is a motion to strike and dismiss the objection. So, is.
That, that's what I said last time, but you said it wasn't right. So you, why don't somebody else make the motion?
I'm afraid to now, myself. Um, motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on that?
Okay. Motion to deny.
Board. Motion to deny.
Chair Rogers, motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss. Which is what we did last time.
Aye.
Right. Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Hennard.
Aye.
Motion carried, three ayes.
At this time, uh, would be, um, argument on the objectors, uh, case in chief, so argument on the objectors verified petition. Um, it's been agreed to by the parties and the board to adopt the arguments made in the, uh, previous case of 2020 DM OEB 06. Um, I would ask, because the, um, issues are the same and the board is the same, so I would ask that the parties, uh, agree to adopting their argument made in the other, in, uh, DM OEB 06 on the record.
So agreed and so stipulated.
Stipulated and agreed.
Okay, um, so then at this point, it would be appropriate to have a motion to either sustain the objections made in the objectors petition, or to overrule the objections made in the objectors petition.
I'll move to overrule the objection.
A second. Any questions? Any discussion? No discussion, one, take the roll.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Rogers?
Hi.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Hennard?
No.
Okay.
Okay, motion carried, two ayes. Okay. 37, we said.
So I don't think we need to then do a motion to, um, because there was a motion to overrule the objection. There's no real reason at this point to do a motion to sustain the objection. So we can then move on to, unless, uh, Trustee Hennard disagrees.
Of course I do, because if we don't.
All right, then go ahead with your motion, Trustee Hennard.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to sustain the objection. Mayor waiting on you. You gotta say it there, sec. Oh, God.
There's no second, it fails, just, those are your own words.
You didn't even ask. You just sat there. You didn't even ask. You're the chairperson. You want me to leave?
If there's no, there is no second. There's no second.
You didn't even ask for a second, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Yeah. Thank you.
There's no second, it fails.
Okay, so, uh, the motion, uh, to overrule the objections made in the objectors petition passed, uh, I will prepare a written decision for the electoral board to finalize its decision, and serve it upon the parties electronically. If any party is not present, the final executed decision will be emailed to them with a copy sent via certified mail. Um, and I will, uh, have the, we will, um, I, I suggest setting this case for December 28th, 2020 at 2:00 PM for the signing of the decision. Um, if that's okay with the parties and the board. And then, um, are the parties going to waive their appearances at the next hearing?
Can this wave?
Yes.
All right. If we want to call the next case, the last case, final case.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I'd like to call to order the electoral board for case number 2020 dash DM OEB dash 09. Um, we're gonna stipulate for the, uh, governors.
Yes, at this point, at this point, Ms. Court Reporter, if you could insert the statement of findings of in-person meeting, uh, due COVID-19 pandemic, as well as the introduction of municipal officers to the electoral board. Chairperson Rogers, I think the next step would be to, uh, do a roll call.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we do the roll.
Chair Rogers?
Here.
Clerk Dugan here. Trustee Hennard.
President.
Okay, there is a quorum, uh, established. Is, uh, how about the appearances for the attorneys?
The attorneys could state their names on the record.
Tiffany Nelson Jaworski on behalf of the objector.
And Keith Spence on behalf of the candidate.
Good. Um, is there any public comment you want to check?
Um, there doesn't seem to be any public comment related to this case, no.
Um, the adoptions of the, of the rules.
No, Mayor.
Is that gonna be, pardon me?
The recap of case status and filings, uh, if I may, Chairperson Rogers?
Uh-huh, that's fine.
Okay. The initial hearing was held on December 15, 2020, and case management order was issued subsequent thereto. The candidate filed a motion to strike and dismiss on December 18, 2020. The objector filed a response to the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss on December 21st, 2020. Next would be, um, preliminary motions, which would be the candidate's motion to strike and dismiss the objectors verified petition. Um, so it's been agreed to by the parties and by the board to adopt the argument made in the 2020 DM OEB 06 case, because the, um, issues are the same and the board is the same. Um, I would ask that there would be an agreement on the record.
So agreed and so stipulated.
So stipulated and agreed.
Okay, great. Um, good. 37, we said.
Okay, um, since the arguments have been made, uh, it would be appropriate at this time for a motion on the motion to strike and dismiss, either a motion to grant the motion to strike and dismiss, or a motion to deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
I move that we deny the motion to strike and dismiss.
Second. This is motion, and a second. Any discussion on that? Roll call.
Mayor Rogers?
Hi.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Hennard?
Aye.
Motion carries, we got.
Uh, since the motion, preliminary motion was denied, at this point, uh, would, we, it would be appropriate to have argument, um, it would be appropriate for the objector to proceed on their case in chief and have argument on their underlying, um, petition. Uh, the parties and the board have agreed to adopt the arguments made in the, in the case 2020 DM OEB 06, because the board is the same and the issues are the same. I would ask that the parties make this agreement on the record.
Stipulated and agreed.
Agreed and stipulated.
Okay. Uh, seeing that there's no additional argument, uh, at this time, it would be appropriate for the electoral board. Okay, seeing that there's no additional argument, uh, at this time, it would be appropriate for the electoral board to vote on whether to sustain or overrule the objections made in the objectors petition, meaning that there be a motion to either sustain the objections or to overrule the objections.
I move to overrule the objections.
Second.
Call the roll.
Any discussion?
Chair Rogers.
Aye.
With clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Hennard.
No.
Okay. And I make a motion to sustain objection.
Uh, there's a motion under for the sustaining objections, is there a second? No second, motion fails.
Uh, since the motion to overrule the objections, um, passed, I will prefer a written decision for the electoral board to finalize its decision and serve upon the parties electronically. If any party is not present at the final, um, the final executed decision will be emailed to them with a copy sent via certified mail. I propose that the, um, that the, uh, decision be signed at the next hearing and that this case be set to December twenty eighth, twenty twenty at two P M. Uh, are the parties going to waive their appearances at the next hearing?
Yes, please, so moved.
Yes, candidate waves.
So then, um, at this time, is, are there, there, are there any other matters for the electoral board at this time?
No, there are not.
Okay, so then the next step would be to make a motion to recess cases twenty twenty oh six, twenty twenty oh nine, and twenty twenty oh eight to December twenty eighth, twenty twenty at two P M.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion on the floor and a second, any discussion on that? Roll call.
Chair Rogers.
Uh, aye.
Clerk Dugan, aye. Trustee Hennard.
Aye.
Motion carries, three ayes. I'd like to make a motion for adjournment, our rese- well, there is.
We already made the motion.
Good. Yeah, okay.
Can't be, thank you, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Bye bye.
Bye.